Hey Jim, can you hear us?
I can, can you guys hear me?
We can, where's the baby girl?
Right here watching her cartoons.
Nice, we do. Okay, we'll get started here just momentarily.
Alright, thank you.
You don't think it's this one?
Oh Ryan, did they get the base station? I think they're rolling everything like that. Is that all that called me today?
I didn't hear it.
Well, I think that's fine. That would be nice.
She said Tommy's supper club was Stotts?
Yep, it was Tommy Stotts.
Tommy Stotts.
He is correct. Does she know that Shirley Meredith?
No, but I will text her right now.
I asked Lanning, but I don't know, I'm going to look at his phone.
Was it Shirley?
Yep, Shirley, Eli. Double T on the Meredith.
One T? Two Ts. Two R's, two Ts? I feel sure it's my sister texting, but asking my mom. My mom, if it was up to her to text, it'd be like.
Yeah, three, four hours.
Yeah, three, four hours later.
I remember first time I I text my oldest daughter. And I think I text her like a two sentence paragraph. And she laughed, she says, how long that takes to text them?
Don't make fun of me, I did it.
Yeah, and that was when there's old the T three, you know, where you had to push it.
Oh, three times.
I think three times to get from.
Yeah.
You with letters.
Yeah, that's CTSI.
I just forwarded it to Chrissy. Hey Chrissy? Just sent you an email from Dana, will you send him a link?
He's asking for a link.
What was your concern with this?
Uh, the difference between the thirty days. Okay, so we had the giving others not less than thirty days prior to written notice. But then when you scroll down, that's not less than thirty.
Yes, P S K every morning.
And we go to our termination clause.
Yep, because their office is off.
Which is fine, that's probably more restricted than.
Yep.
They used to be in the old Mott's Ranch House off of twenty four.
Oh really?
But then whenever they bought lighting, they moved over to that.
Hundred and twenty days.
Oh, that is different.
Yeah, I think we're, Chrissy, are you ready? Or we need to get Dana in?
I have to say I am, but I'm sending him the message right now, so.
Okay, so give it just a second, then, get him added.
Jennifer, how? You and Ty, how do you guys want to do this motion stuff?
You want to read them, Ty, and then I can second them.
Sure.
Thank you.
I guess.
Or we could have Michaela second them. He's not into it.
Mom said she didn't recognize the name. If that doesn't mean that.
I know Mary. That's just me.
Oh, Don, we need to leave by about seven fifteen, seven thirty. Meeting tomorrow, I just got your email.
I think that should get on any moment, so whenever you guys are ready to start.
Okay. If he has trouble for a disreverses, you guys.
That's good.
Okay, let's uh, start off with the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with a rule of justice for all.
Okay, good morning, everybody. This uh, public comment period. Any member of the public may address the board on matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board. If you are addressing the board regarding matters listed on the agenda, you are requested to limit your comments to three minutes per member or five minutes per group. The public comment time is not for questions and answers, it is your time to express your views. To ensure there is adequate public comment time, please provide your name and address prior to the meeting by contacting the board assistant. Nine seven zero eight seventy nine five seven five. If any member of the public would like to comment at this time, please state your name and address for the record.
Charles Brady, two hundred Magnolia, Ransley, Colorado, eight one six four eight.
Good, Charles, what do you mean?
I, I, I read, this first time I've seen one of your agendas, the part that you just read. I think that's why um, you don't see many uh, citizens here. It's because that's, that's, that's quite demanding for somebody to come to a meeting that they're paying for and that you people are working for them to, to read this. And, and, and it's like they're little kids. I don't agree with, I don't agree with that part B. I think that ought to be redone. I think you people have to understand that John Doe public normally entrust you to do what's best for them and for our county. And when statements like that are put out, it, it, it doesn't, doesn't go well with John Doe public. And, and, and you guys need to look at that and, and, and see what you can do. Uh, the other thing I'd like to comment on is uh, the fact that there's not a question and answer, well, if we're just supposed to comment, then how do we get the answers to our comments? Um, you guys, again, work for us, we don't work for you. Um, and that being the fact, uh, my question to you uh, is, is why do you guys think you don't have to answer questions in a meeting? The whole world, every government entity answers questions in meetings. What makes the commissioners of Rio Blanco County any different? Can you answer that?
I I don't, I don't think it's so much that it's um, that we don't want to answer questions or that we won't answer questions, it's that for the sake of everybody's time in the meeting, that we don't want to spend the entire meeting going back and forth on said topic. So I don't think that it's that we don't want to answer the public's questions or um, give you an answer, it just might not be right then and there during our public meeting, but I, I do think that our intent, and I think we would all agree as a board, that you, you are correct, we do work for you. Um, I don't think anybody would debate that, but we would also get you a timely answer to whatever question you would have.
Then can you answer me this? Why, and, and again, I, I, I could be wrong, and maybe you will correct me. But I am under the understanding that the Rio Blanco County Commissioners fund the um, well, they fund the um, historical place, so.
Historical society, the museum?
No, the, the get my mind. Anyway, the one, the one that's right out by uh, the museum, and there you go. That, that, that you guys fund the museum in, in Meeker? To some extent?
We, we own the building.
Do you give them money?
The contract is for them to manage that property. And yes, they do get a management fee for managing that particular property. The county owns the building, they maintain the exhibits and things like that. We also give the Ransley Museum money at different times when they needed different items and things like that.
According to the live, to the museum here, um, you guys didn't give money for a long time.
I guess, and let me introduce myself, I'm Vicky Edwards, I'm the administrator, commissioners if I may. Okay, um, those are the things like in this agenda, like if you have a concern like that, that we need to do research on, so we can give you the correct information. We're not going to be able to pull that information right here at the meeting. Not a delay tactic, and we can certainly set a future meeting and say, okay, the next meeting that we have, we'll schedule a special session where the commissioners will be briefed on all the information that pertains to that. But to bring something up like that right now, there's no way we're going to have to be able to go in to get the information together.
I, I.
So certainly, what I can do is get the information together and get with you.
It, it is questions like this that the citizens of Ransley, Colorado have concerns over and they're afraid to bring them up. It's, 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 it's getting pretty bad when you see all these people here in this, this room. There's not one, one John Doe citizen except myself here. You ever ask yourself why?
Yeah, I ask myself that all, that all the time. And, and want more public participation, but getting back to your question about this, this uh, comment statement. Government lawyers, everybody always does things for the extreme. Because that is the only, that's the way we deal with things, and then we come down from there. But I, so we're, we're, uh, I guess when they, when they did that, they're figuring on a whole room full of people that we need to control. But I, I, as chairman and, and a board member, am going to talk to you or anybody else that walks in this room. We're going to do it.
But when it's in black and white, it doesn't say what you just said.
I don't know how to uh, uh, control that legally. I guess that's, that's something we'll look at.
I've been to a lot of town council meetings in Ransley. They don't have the stipulation in there. The public comment area.
Yeah.
Not, not all of this, this, this other gibberish that's in here. And all, all I'm saying Doug is, is that is that if, if, if you want more participation, be proactive so that the citizens feel like their input, their concerns are, are, are valid and that you guys understand that you will do what you can to satisfy all of them. Or at least to answer them.
I, 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 I agree with you, and I would go a step farther, I want input. I want to know what the people are thinking and how they want their government to be running. That's what, that's what I would like to hear.
I, I, I get around a lot and, and it's like what are the commissioners doing? What are they doing for our county? And I, I don't expect an answer though, I, I'm, I'm just telling you how people feel. We don't see you. We don't, we don't hear anything from you other than what's in the paper from time to time. Uh, what do you guys do all day? Where are you at? How come you're not out in the public?
One other thing I would like to make, so I'll give you my business card so that we can communicate about the budget and about the, the Ransley Museum, and I can get you that information. Um, but also the commissioners, their phone numbers are published, and, and I know they've always been able to take calls and things like that, they're not necessarily going to know, you know, how many times have we funded the Ransley Library, what's included in that budget, what's included in the Meeker Museum's library without getting that research from historic research, so. That's part of that statement there that says, you know, we want to allow adequate public comment time. And the question and answers could be just like this, it kind of gets could get long and drawn out, so we want to try and focus their time and get them the right answer so that they can set up a special work session, for instance. And say, you know, we're going to do one with uh, the Fair Board, for instance. Very specific topic so that it kind of focuses it in on that one topic. So that may be something too, anytime that you want to approach the commissioners individually, feel free to do so, they're always have been available and taking calls and corresponding with their constituents.
I'm I'm not a, 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 I mean, I, I get around a lot, I'm not very uh, I don't like to go out in the public and speak like I'm doing right now, but, but when I read this, I, I thought, oh, this is, this is crazy.
Well, I mean, I was just reading, Ransley does have something very similar to that.
Well.
Under city council.
It, it is not put out in an agenda every week or every month.
Okay.
It is.
I mean, that, that.
It is.
I'm sorry, but my wife was mayor for eight years. So don't tell me what it is or what it ain't. You, you guys, all I'm asking you to do is make it more feasible for John Doe public.
True.
And, 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 and you know? Come see Ransley. I mean, we're not the armpit of Rio Blanco County, we're Ransley, Colorado. And we would like to be treated like that. And, 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 and it's time the commissioners, including our own commissioner, brought out more in our public so that we can see what you guys actually do.
Is, is there something that you think that we should be doing that we're, that we're not?
Yeah, talking to the people, Doug.
Well.
Talking to the people, and maybe you are. But I, I mean, nobody said that, oh, Doug Overton come up and seen me today and asked me how I was doing and what could he do to help our county? And neither has our commissioner from Ransley. The only time I see our commissioner is when she's walking her dog. Other than that, I never see anybody. I see Melissa more at the DMV than I do any of you.
I don't know, I come down here, at least uh, all the RDA meetings and things like that, and see a lot of people when I'm down here, so. I don't, I don't know, I'm, I'm missing you, I guess.
No, it, it's not about me. It's about our people. It's about it's about the little guy at Ransley.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not all of the board members that sit on all of these different boards, it's it's about the John Doe guy that, and lady that pays their taxes every day. Go to work every day, come home, raise a family, and, and, and they're not out in the public light.
So, I agree with that, so how, how do you uh, how do we do that?
I don't know.
Do we go knocking on their doors, or what, what, how would you like us to accomplish that?
That's your job. I don't have the answer. I just have the concerns. And, and it, it's, it's like, maybe, maybe you could have a meeting of meet and greet just to see if you can get more people involved from our end of the county. I mean, Meeker and Ransley are not in separate counties.
No, they're not, but just to these, uh, we need to move on here, but you know, when we, I can remember coming down here very recently to a meet and greet with the candidates for Rio Blanco County Commissioner. We can't get anybody to come. I mean, I can count on one hand how many people came from Ransley to that meeting. So, I need some help from you of how to, how to get people engaged, I understand your frustration, but we're frustrated too, how, how, how do we do that?
And maybe it's just by word of mouth, by getting out, by talking to people and say, hey, we're going to have a meeting, we need everybody there. And, and again, you don't want a free for all, I understand that, I don't want a free for all. But it would, it would be nice if we could just have a meeting to where people could sit down and meet you guys.
And, and I agree with that, we need to do that. The only time that we ever get a crowd is when there's controversy and something going on, and that's the only time that we get a crowd, and it would be really nice to do it before that. Or, you know, communications going, I agree with you.
And I, I, I just, I just think that, that um, in these times with all the political uproar that's going on, we don't need our county divided any more than it already is. And, and that's all I'll say.
Well, thank you, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody, any other public comments? Okay, let's move on to um, the agenda. And this is a tentative agenda which includes all of the information available as of August nineteenth, twenty twenty four. The final tentative agenda will be posted at the Rio Blanco County Historical Courthouse, five fifty five Main Street, Meeker, Colorado. Eight, at the Ransley Town Hall, two oh nine East Main Street, Ransley. It's um, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the August twenty seventh, twenty twenty four agenda.
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, would you please call the role?
Gates.
Aye.
Overton.
Aye.
O'Hair. Aye.
Okay, let's move on to consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the below listed items of the consent agenda.
A second.
Motion on the floor, any discussion? Seeing none, would you please call the role?
Gates.
Aye.
Overton. O'Hair. Aye.
Okay, let's move on to uh, business. Line item A.
I think that'll be the presentation.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, presentation by Dana Foley, is Dana online? Okay, so we're going to move on to line item B and then come back to that when we get through with B, okay? Um, so then we're going to have a presentation by Andy Schmidt regarding Enterprise Fleet Services. And I understand that this is for uh, um, possibility you're, you're uh, presenting fleet services for the county?
It's fleet management.
Fleet management.
Yes.
Yep. We can get into the specifics of what it is and what isn't, so. Um, do appreciate y'all spending some time with me today, um, the reason why we're really here today is I was able to meet y'all at CCI a couple of years. I had a conversation with Ryan and Vicky about a month ago, um, learned a little bit more about the county and the fleet operation and use that information to put together a proposal uh, for the county, and I really appreciate y'all sitting down with me today and uh, discussing it. Um, uh, because we have a lot of information to cover, I'm going to move quickly through just high level overview of enterprise, who we are, what we do. Uh, secondly, would just be spending some time on the financial analysis we've put together for you, and then definitely leave some time at the end for questions. Um, I did have, Chrissy, is that PowerPoint deck available? Yeah, no problem. So, you know, in the interest of time, I, I could definitely jump into it, and I do have some hard copies, um, if you need it at all. Um, so in terms of enterprise, we do work with quite a few government agencies throughout the state, uh, personally, I work with Park County, um, Montezuma County, Adams County. We've got quite a few other counties that our office uh, does work with. Um, maybe what I'll do is I'll just give you guys these hard copies, so that's, at least follow along, and then hopefully we can get that decked up. So that really covers the, the first slide, which was really just, I believe, kind of our folks we work with. Um, and that sort of thing, I believe the next slide then would go over to um, our services, there should be a circle on the front of the page, I believe. I'm remembering it correctly, thank you. So, high level overview, we can provide a lot of different services for county and government clients. Um, obviously with Rio Grande, you've got, excuse me, Rio Blanco. Um, you've got in-house maintenance, onsite fuel, some of those services, um, obviously may not be applicable to you at this point, but really what we're going to focus on today is vehicle replacement. Um, acquisition and being able to dispose of vehicles. Um, a pretty good basis for you. Um, the other thing I want to point out is as we look to update fleets with government agencies, excuse me, government clients, obviously, safety is important, the newer vehicles do have more standard safety equipment, which most of our, you know, government and commercial clients do appreciate as we look to update that fleet more regularly. Uh, I believe the next slide should be the municipal financing slide. Yeah, that's fine, and I'm going to try to actually pull up a copy here while we're going through that, so. When we look at the mechanism that we use for providing vehicle replacements for folks within the municipal and commercial space, we do use a municipal funding option or model. And I think what I want to say right off the bat is that it is not a typical lease where you've got mileage restrictions or wear and tear restrictions. It is really more of the, hey, financing mechanism designed to allow you a cash flow benefit and allow you to have all equity rights in the vehicle. And when you're done with it. So, typical financing, you might have a forty eight to zero type scenario where you finance a vehicle, let's say you go into your bank, you finance a vehicle for four years. If you want to get out of that, finance it thirty six months, you go into your bank, you pay off the underappreciated loan balance. And then you can turn around and sell that vehicle, and anything you sell for above the loan balance is obviously your gain. So, if you had a book balance of ten thousand dollars on the vehicle, you pay your bank. So if you had a book balance of ten thousand dollars on the vehicle, you pay your bank ten thousand, you turn around and sell it to your friend for twenty, you pocket that ten thousand dollar difference. So our financing structure works the exact same way. So in the model that I've shown you there, instead of paying cash for a vehicle or instead of financing it to zero over, say, a forty-eight month period of time, we finance it to a very conservative book value. You own all equity rights. Within the model that I've shown you, that is ten thousand dollars. If we can sell the vehicle for about twenty-two, five, you own that twelve thousand five hundred dollars of equity. I have to give that equity back to you. We're probably on slide four.
Aye.
I just looked down, it's PDF, so usually easier for me than PowerPoint in these forums.
You'll let me know when I get.
Oh, are you doing it or I'm doing it? I think I'm presenting, actually.
All right.
Vehicle disposal or?
Uh, if you want to just go up a smidge, that'd be great. So, um, this is the, the slide that, uh, I was intending to show, so thank you. So really what the model is designed to do is allow our government clients to do more with a comparable amount of capital that they may be spending right now replacing vehicles, replacing them more quickly and reducing maintenance and repair costs and getting an inbound revenue stream when we replace vehicles more quickly for you. Any questions on this model? Anything I can answer for you about this particular slide?
What if we have negative equity?
So that's a great question. In general, if you have negative equity, you are responsible for it. That's where it's incumbent on us to ensure that we're setting those book balances artificially low. Within government, we're usually putting those at a ten to twenty percent book value, five years. And I've been a company twenty-five years. I do a lot of business in oil and gas and in government. We in general are selling those vehicles for much higher amount than that ten to twenty percent book balance. Does that make sense? So.
In the last few years, that's.
Yeah, even, even over the last, quite frankly, you know, twenty-five years, we've got a pretty good track record. So if you think about a ten thou- uh, fifty thousand dollar vehicle that's got a book balance of eight or ten thousand dollars on it at the end of five years and your mileage isn't extremely high, it's higher than some counties. But I would certainly say that we're gonna be a very good equity spot for you on a five-year-old vehicle with, say, fifty to seventy-five thousand miles. I profiled the last year of how we sold commissioner, um, on pickup trucks. We, I think obviously that's cherry picking because, you know, those are doing pretty well, but we're about forty-five to fifty-five percent of the original value of the vehicle at three to six-year-old trucks and around a hundred thousand miles. So we want to make sure that you don't have negative equity because obviously that doesn't bode well for our long-term business partnership. Okay, any other questions? Um, so I believe then the next slide and I've got two more slides to discuss and then we'll get into the financial analysis. So if we're gonna advocate that you should be selling your vehicles more quickly, we have to have a great way of disposing of them for you. So between rent-a-car and truck rental, fleet management, we sell in excess of a million vehicles here. We try not to take a lot of vehicles to auction. We hand sell a high number of these vehicles. And on average, we're doing about ten percent above black book, which is my industry's equivalent of, of blue book. Um, because we keep things out of auction, those lost fees, we can sell more quickly and we can demand higher prices than we might be able to if we were to just use an auction scenario. Um, my industry and the folks that manage this department are judged and graded on how well they sell vehicles against black book. So that's how we're able to help you cycle more quickly by recognizing revenue on the backside when you sell your vehicle at the end of the loan period. Questions at all?
End of the loan period.
End of the municipal finance.
Yeah. Um, that's where we have a hard time because we don't get rid of trucks. We only get rid of vehicles. So, uh, end of the loan period that we, we run them out or we?
Yep. So part of our job is to help clients take a look at financially what makes sense. And I'm gonna get us some financial metrics in just a couple of slides in the spirit of, and Chris, you know, looking a little bit from a model. Uh, fair?
Yeah.
I think it'll make a little more sense where I should get to the finance, uh, table that I put together for you. Final slide I want to share with you is just industry resale values. So obviously it's been very strong. This is about twenty years of, of resale seasonally adjusted. Uh, obviously you can see that the resale market across a twenty-year period of time has been pretty strong. Obviously, we had that increase during the inventory shortage. We're projecting that to continue to stay very strong. The bottom line is your vehicles you have today are worth quite a bit of money. And so what our thought process is, is why not replace those vehicles when they have a fair amount of value left? You're not gonna have a lot of maintenance and repair. You're keeping the fleet updated. It's safer and financially it's more viable for the county and most of my government partners. In fact, when they run these models, to cycle their vehicles more regularly. Works a lot of folks, know on the gas construction two years. There really is a tipping point where vehicles decrease in value and the maintenance repair cost starts to creep up and become a little, uh, unpredictable. So those are the summary slides. I'd like to jump into the analysis I did for everybody. You have some hard copies, I believe, that's obviously in the deck that, um, provided if y'all want to pass it around. Everybody else can start going. I have one. Um, so. All right. Just so everybody's know, I think the commissioner's having it. I think the commissioner. So what we did here for you is we basically profiled your fleet and this is really the, the crux of our session today. So you've got about fifty-five vehicles. There's a couple bins that didn't quote the code, so that should be really close to accurate. A large majority of your vehicle are trucks. We get that. Again, I work with a lot of trucks within my, um, industry. And we also looked at kind of what your overall fleet budget is. I'm gonna show you where that number came from on the next slide. Um, what we then did is said, okay, well, I'm sorry, Becky, I'm not quite done with this.
Oh, sorry.
I, I. So what we first did is the top right corner here, we looked at any vehicle that's ten years or older or a hundred thousand miles would be, um, up for replacement within our model. So over here, as we look at the different model years that we're replacing the vehicles, in twenty twenty-five, we're showing twenty-seven vehicles, again, over a hundred thousand miles, ten years old. I know you're on a long period of time, but the great benefit is you've got a lot of resale equity built in within that fleet. And then over a period of years, we do six, thirteen, three, six, et cetera. So over a five-year period of time, we fully replaced the fleet. And then within the, um, model, we then do it again for year six through ten. And in just a moment, I'll show you how that works. But I do want to point out too that you do have a number of vehicles, obviously, over than, uh, older than ten years old. Uh, we have factored in things like SO outfits. I think the SOs running some Ram, uh, power wagons, factor that in there. So we've definitely taken some of those things into account that I've spoken with, uh, Ryan and Vicky about. Um, any questions on the methodology or kind of the cadence at which we've chosen to show you replacements?
I know it's expensive to outfit the SO trucks.
Correct.
So where is that factored into?
Yeah.
Where's that cost factor?
Yeah. So we have factored some of that cost into our modeling and some of our clients too just pay cash for some of that too. Um, we do recognize that as a sunk cost that you do have. I understand these, yes, so it's cycling probably a little more regularly anyway because of the mileage being put on the trucks. So that is factored into what we showed. So flipping over to the, any other questions? All right. So this is where I'm gonna spend the majority of our time today and then we'd love to get some feedback and, um, on the next slide, sorry, C I. Didn't say that. So the first thing we gotta do, again, this is a, a conceptual, um, look at what was it? What would this fleet look like over a ten-year period of time if we could assist the county with replacing it? So the first thing we have to do is create benchmark for what your current costs are. So I want to really call your attention to the fifty-five vehicles. If we go back to over the last many years, you've replaced on average, call it five a year. So if the county continues needing to replace five vehicles per year, your amount of capital needed on average across all vehicles is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The yellow line is your current situation estimated based on the information that we collected from staff. So you need five vehicles, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in purchase budget. Maintenance is based off of industry averages and conversations with Ryan about a fleet that is about this old. Again, average across all vehicles, fuel simply based off cost per gallon, average mileage, those types of things. So we come up with an average fleet budget of capital and operating expenses, not including insurance costs of about five hundred and thirty-nine thousand. So the other thing that we do factor in is we know this equity owned column, the minus twenty thousand. You obviously are getting some amount of money back when you sell those vehicles, but under our, uh, process, we can accelerate that and bring that money back in a little more quickly replacing like older vehicles. So if we look at the first year and then I'll take quick break and answer questions. We would, uh, show you how we would replace those twenty-seven vehicles. You'd still have some owned vehicles. You would flip from a purchase budget to a lease budget. Yes, it's a little higher than the purchase. However, your maintenance comes down quite a bit because you've got twenty-seven brand new vehicles, oil changes, maybe some tires or brakes. You're getting out of some of that larger ticket items. Ryan shared you don't have a ton of catastrophic repairs, but it is not uncommon for us to see a few five hundred to a thousand dollar repairs coming in the door on older vehicles. So your maintenance cost comes down, your fuel costs come down because newer vehicles are simply more fuel efficient than old vehicles. So these numbers all come down, but then we're also able to really create an inbound revenue stream from selling those first twenty-seven vehicles. So on average, those twenty-seven vehicles are worth about ten thousand dollars, representing about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars of equity. Again, this model is conceptual because we have to go out ten years to show proof of concept. We know things might change in years eight, nine, or ten, those types of things, but we want to be able to show our clients that under this model, we can save the county a projected four hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars over a ten-year period of time. And we look at the net sustainable, you gotta look at year six through ten because you won't have a lot of that owned equity coming back. So your net sustainable savings in year six through ten is about fifteen thousand dollars. And that's also obviously having brand new vehicles, safer vehicles, um, less issues with downtime, more reliable vehicles. Um, questions on that methodology? Cause I'll really through kind of the rest of it, just to say.
Maintenance.
Yep.
Are you gonna fire some, um, are we gonna have to let people go?
Right.
Because that, that is gonna be the majority of our maintenance.
Sure. And talking to Ryan, obviously you have a lot, a lot of other heavy equipment you're maintaining. And generally what we see is there is simply less maintenance and repair to be done. Some of that capacity can be shifted to some of the other heavier equipment. Keep in mind, we're just looking at light duty trucks.
We're shifting the maintenance from pickups to heavy duty.
Well, that if it needs done, or we've had a number of counties commissioner that they've got mechanics retiring. It is not the easiest position to hire for. Over a period of five years, it may put you in a position to weather a mechanic retiring. Um, and that's the labor cost, obviously, but you're not gonna have parts cost associated with it. When we look at maintenance and repair costs, historically about half of its labor, half of its parts. So obviously you've got parts cost. So does that make sense?
Well, I, I, I see how this works on the paper, but I, I have my doubts whether it's gonna come out that way.
Sure, because you're concerned about you still got sunk expenses in the maintenance and repair area that can't make. And that's an understandable concern. I think, you know, with the limited amount of time we have today, we're gonna do, we're gonna do a concept too. I think further conversations with you and or staff about how it actually be implemented, we can certainly look at. But we have certainly found that, um, you know, mechanics are tough to find and, you know, while you may be lucky today, here, you know, you've got a retirement, you've got some attrition. And we're not really talking about being fully implemented for a full five years. I mean, you're really talking about twenty-seven of fifty-five vehicles in year one. That year one is gonna be probably into next calendar year. So we're not talking about tomorrow. We're not talking about January first, twenty twenty-five. Um, certainly there would be some planning time with the county to, to look at those, those types of scenarios. Um, any other questions?
Well, let's just take next year. How much money can you save us next year?
That's a new question. I appreciate you asking. So what I didn't do is actually, and I bet you brought it up, five thirty-nine is your estimated budget or what you're currently spending. So if we look at lease payments, obviously maintenance, fuel, and then we take out the two eighty-seven in equity, your budget for next year is only two hundred and forty-one thousand. So your net cash savings, and I apologize, I didn't point this out, your net cash savings estimated for next year is nearly three hundred thousand dollars. So that's how much money this could potentially save you next year. Recognizing a lot of that does come from the equity in the owned fleet, but also you've got reduced maintenance and repair costs. So that's where I really need to step through to the next few years here. So you've got obviously more vehicles you're getting through one, years one through five, then we've got year six through ten, we repeat the process. Um, obviously lease budget goes down, but a lot of these other budgets go down as well. And eventually you're getting a fair amount of equity back from your leased fleet. Cause when we sell vehicles at year five, for you, those first twenty-seven, we get to recognize all the equity back above the book value and that's reflected in the four hundred and seventeen thousand that you see in twenty twenty-nine. I can't see that far. So this is really the net cash is a representation of what your savings are year over year by implementing the model. So obviously you've got two hundred and ninety-eight thousand the first year, then twenty-seven, forty-two, costs you a little bit in year four. But then we recognize a lot of equity that next year. So as things level out and even out, net savings is about four hundred and fifty thousand.
Enterprise is big, huge. You've, have you got examples of other counties, other places you've done where you can show me hard figures where you've paid that?
I mean, I, we can look at Montezuma County, Park County has been a client for quite some time. Uh, we've been to city clients that, you know, have been on board a long time. Candidly, the CCA, uh, introductions have been really created, us being able to meet more, uh, counties. Uh, Rio Grande's a client now. Uh, Morifano's probably a really good referral. They've been with us quite some time. Uh, so yeah, I'd be happy to, to look at what this actually looks like fully implemented. And in some cases, we might be saving them less money. Let's face it, this is conceptual. In some cases, we're saving them more because the resale value went up quite a bit in the last few years, as I'm sure you're aware. Um, so we can provide some of that information if you like, if you want to schedule time.
Yeah, I'd like to see a present, a presentation like this that you've given them. And then in three or four years, see the actual.
What's the longest you've had clients with in Colorado?
In the government space?
Yeah, well, like, so I'd say the county or city government space, just thinking of, you know, if everybody's in year two or three,
Sure.
it may be skewed compared to if it, they're in year eight, nine, or ten.
Yeah, that's a great, uh, question. I mean, certainly some of the bigger ones, city, county, Denver, within certain niche markets we've had for quite some time. Um, I'd have to get you some of the city statistics. Um, candidly, the counties, I mean, there's some we've been with for a long time, but I would certainly say in the last five years because we made a effort to be involved in CCI that's opened a lot of doors for us, but I can get you that information for sure. Um, you know, City of Fountain's been with us a long time, City of Commerce City, ten, fifteen years. That school district, Boulder Valley Schools has been with us forever. So there's certainly, and, and it's all the same model. I mean, government gets a large rebate upfront. We can take advantage of that through OEM marketing, I'm sorry, OEM ordering or state bid. The vehicles are still worth a lot of money and that's really the, the crux of the model, but I can get you some of that information if you need it.
So Don, that makes me think, do we have to send this out to bid? I mean, are there any other companies like Enterprise that would, would have a right to bid on that according to the procurement policy?
According to the procurement policy, we, we probably need a RFP and see if there's any other countries out there that can come up with, uh, uh, something, you know, similar on, on the thing. I think that given, um, well, I think it'd be, you know, situational based on that.
Most of our government clients are using Sourcewell, if you're familiar with that.
Yeah, we do.
You're a Sourcewell member. They vetted it out. It's the second time we've been awarded it. So most folks are using the Sourcewell for their due diligence. I'm, I'm glad you brought that up. It's on my last slide.
Um, in the last, since COVID, fleet vehicle acquisition bidding. fleet vehicle acquisition bidding and stuff is a whole different ballgame. So is that taken into consideration here?
Yeah, I mean, most recently for Adams County, we did about thirty seven vehicles commissioner. And through a variety of dealer direct ordering, OEM manufacturer ordering, finding the vehicles that would be produced for the type of application they need. We got every single one of their vehicle either built or through a, you know, state good dealer type of situation. So um, I worked very closely with their fleet manager to be talking about, let's get a Ford Expedition instead of a Chevy Suburban because it's gonna get built. Let's work on a Dodge Durango Police instead of something else. Let's look at, you know, a Jeep Grand Cherokee instead of a Ford something that wasn't getting built. So that's something that in partnership with Enterprise, you would have an account team. Um, that's really the next and, and next to final slide, Vicky, if you wouldn't mind just turning to that. You would have an account team that would help you. So we have dedicated account managers that manage our clients in, you know, Colorado and, and through the mountain states. So we would have some, excuse me, assisting you and Ryan with those uh procurement uh activities every year to ensure that the vehicles you need.
Ryan and Ricky, you guys have looked at this. Is this something we need to look at farther? I'm interested in your opinion.
I defer to Ryan.
I, I really would need to crunch numbers extensively before any solid decision would be made or any direction given. Um, yeah, that's probably not, I would have to really.
Sure.
No, I totally appreciate that.
Do some of my own cost analysis and whatnot.
Your time is pretty valuable right now. When can you see this? Uh, I, I can see a uh, work session or something getting together, talking about this more. What, what do you think?
Well, because it will have, I mean, depending on when you want it, if, if it was something that you wanted to do, if you wanted to implement for twenty twenty five, we've got to have the budget set this month. So, I mean.
But I don't know, we don't know what we're gonna do unless we can see if it's gonna save us money or not. The chicken and the egg.
If you would flip to the next slide, and, and I, I totally agree with you, Commissioner, I mean, really, this would be where Ryan and I can do validation of data. And then that uh second line is your own replacements venue pricing. Of course, we have given you this conceptual model that's based on ten years, a hundred thousand. Ryan and I may sit down and you may say, well, we got some newer vehicles that are dying. We gotta pull them forward. So if that money can provide you menu pricing, which would give you a little more exact numbers on what that's actually going to cost the county in year one. So you can look at it from a budgeting standpoint. The other thing that a lot of counties have done is said, we're going to spend this amount of vehicle procurement. So can we shift that to this model later if we need to? I don't know if that's a possibility, but that is how some of my government partners.
Well, just this is not something that the commissioners are gonna study and do themselves. We're, that's why we have him hired.
Yep.
And so we're gonna defer to him and then him to Vicky and have you and we can make the decision.
Well, and I think that makes sense too, from a standpoint of getting the information on, you know, some of the longer lasting, you know, counting information so we can compare that, how that looks year eight, nine, and ten with the reference that we can give them a call and say, hey Sally, how do you think this is going? Is it something you'd repeat? Um, because that I think is critically important.
And do you do counting in other states as well?
Oh, yeah.
Those would be also probably be somewhat comparable.
Especially if we get similar size.
Yeah.
We, we are really interested in saving money.
Okay.
So whatever, you know, that's where, that's where it comes to us, where the, where the money dies. So.
I gotta have numbers into you by thirtieth, right?
For, and I would say for existing budget. Um, yeah, continuing the way it is, if we decide to make a change, we could still do that after that standpoint. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Um, we're doing that with some other things. Let's proceed the exact way that we've done it in past years for this current budget, so we can get those numbers start pulled together. If then we make a change, we can say, okay, based on that, I mean, you know, I, I don't know that I'd see the county increasing and paying more. You know, especially sub- substantially more this year, we just don't have it.
Yeah.
So it's either gonna be, this is the worst case scenario based on existing. Here's how much better it could be if we were to go with Enterprise. But I'll defer to the commissioners if that's, sounds like a legitimate direction.
With the, with the uh valuation down and, and our revenues down, we can't look at it any other way.
And then the other thing is if we could get like the contract, the sample contract uh, so that we can have our attorney review that for the appropriations clause and litigation clauses and all those fun things. That would be great.
Don Stierman.
Don Stierman, are you on the website or?
Yeah, I think, think so.
Uh, let me give you, here, I'll just give you, just email it to me and I can get it done because I'm also a paralegal, so.
Great. Yeah, I, I think I've got your information.
I think you have my old paralegal card, so, but that's okay, same stuff.
Um, so yeah, I mean, I can give you the contract. I can get you the Sourcewell award information. So you've got that. I can work with Ryan on the financial analysis with kind of the year one. Um, budgeting and Ryan, maybe if we could catch up when I wrap up today. Um, and I mean, we could definitely get you this information in short order and give you some budget numbers to either put a plug in for next year or just start to look at what this may look like. And, you know, Commissioner, over since you, it may be twenty vehicles, it might be thirty vehicles, it might be fifteen vehicles. So I mean, this is the starting point, but every day it might be a little different, but actually.
Yeah, but we, we, you know, it's, it's a it's a starting point. So if we start this, we don't wanna do it years and then forget it.
Oh, yeah.
We wanna be committed if we're gonna do this because, and you're gonna have to show us that it's gonna save us money.
Gotcha. Um, I will provide that information. I'll note on that. Our account managers are required to do an annual client, client review every year with clients benchmark their costs year for year. So that is something we provide and something that went back historically on um, that person would be responsible for implementing this program. I definitely hear the budget sensitivity. Lots of kind of sure.
Give me your time. Yep.
I don't have anything.
So I would suggest, uh, depending on how fast you can get your information together, I know the budgets do at the, by the end of the month as we start plugging in those numbers. Um, our next meeting in Meker is September tenth. We could probably have you some good information by then unless you wanna do a special meeting.
I think the tenth works.
For me, unless something happened, we have another meeting and you can throw it on.
Would that work for you?
Yes.
On September tenth, okay.
Yeah, I'd probably remove it.
That's fine. Sure. I think it's fine. Chrissy, did you get that for a possibility? Perfect. Okay.
And any specific counties you all know the commissioner as well, whether it's Park, Monazuma, or Fana, that would be good references or just really any of them?
Jennifer, I'm gonna defer to you. You know the CCI stuff better than I.
I do know both, um, Monazuma and Park. I could reach out to both of them.
Maybe Commissioner Candelaria at Monazuma. I know the one really. We've been working on for quite some time.
You kinda know Park County too, so.
Yeah, I would say any of those commissioners do as well. Okay.
Um, what about for Ryan as far as some, maybe some fleet managers that he could contact?
I was gonna just reach out to Park and maybe Monazuma. Um, I think they're kind of similar in size.
Yeah, like.
Okay, perfect.
Definitely Mike, um, Mike Park.
Chrissy, did you see his penis getting in? Perfect. Thank you, man. All right. Thanks.
Thanks very much. We appreciate it. And thank you very much for having me today and considering us. Thanks you all.
Thanks for some over inversion.
Oh, no problem. It's enjoyable to get out of the office.
Oh, perfect. I'll take it. Yep.
Thank you.
And say travels back.
Oh, thank you very much.
Whoa.
So Dana, are you online?
Didn't, anyone hear me?
Yes, Dana, is that you?
It is me. I am, I, I, my camera doesn't work. Um, let's see if I can, let me try to log out and log right back in and see if that makes it work.
Perfect. And now he's joined.
All right, let's see if I can get my camera to work.
Good. We can hear you.
It just says my, the meeting will not, not let my um, camera work. So I might have to do this. Um, let's see if I can share a screen here.
Dana, if you can't, if you can email it to me, I can present also.
Okay.
If that helps, we can tag team it, whichever way works.
Who, who do I email this to?
If you want, email to Vicky, B I C K Y dot Edwards, E D W A R D S at R B C dot U S.
Vicky dot Edwards at R B C. You, you all have the easiest email.
Yes, we do.
And I apologize for the confusion today. I had it, I have it in multiple locations, so I didn't wanna be wrong and and, and miss this date for a later date. So um, I appreciate you accommodating here. Let me send. Where did that email? The joys of uh internet and
Technology, yep.
Technology. Okay, I am sending you four documents.
Right.
And they are the mid-year, the annual, and the, um, five-year loss analysis.
Okay.
Now I gotta figure out where you went, so I can see the, the screen.
Okay, got it. I've got your email pulled up. So give me, which, do you wanna go to, what do you, what should we pull up first? I'll download them all and then you can.
So, um, they're in order, so you can do the first one. That is the, the, the mid-year.
And pull that up.
So, you know, uh, commissioners, thank you for uh accommodating me and giving me a little bit of time this morning to, to meet with you about our loss analysis. I, just to introduce myself so that you, uh, you remember, I am Dana Foley. I am your senior loss control specialist um, at CTSI. Uh, CTSI is your self-insurance pool. Uh, remember that CTSI is all county owned, all county operating or operated, and it is a nonprofit. So you can't get any more local than that, uh, in terms of, um, having the benefit of being self-insured with like uh entities as well, and it's also a nonprofit. So um, the way it works is that every year, CTSI, they set a surplus level for each pool, the, the CWCP pool, which is the work comp and the cap pool, which is your casualty and liability pool. So anything above that surplus line goes back to the members and as distributions. So to give you an example of that, last year out of the CWCP pool, we gave back twenty seven point eight, or I'm sorry, we had a surplus of twenty seven point eight million dollars. And we gave back a million dollars of surplus back to, as a distribution to our members. The cap pool has a healthy surplus of fourteen point five million, and we were able to give back five hundred thousand to our, our members. And then all of your contributions at the beginning of the year go into an account. And that account earns interest. And so we also gave back over a million dollars of that interest back to the, uh, to the county members. So what did that do for Rio Blanco last year out of that one million from the CWCP or work comp pool? Rio Blanco got back twenty nine thousand, five hundred and eighteen thousand. Out of that five hundred thousand, Rio Blanco got thirteen hundred or, or thirteen thousand, four hundred and eight dollars. And then of the one million dollars of interest, Rio Blanco got sixteen thousand, five hundred and thirty four dollars for a grand total of fifty nine thousand, four hundred and sixty dollars. And so that's, I mean, I always say this, where else do you get to spend that same nickel twice? And it's, uh, it's in the pools. Um, so that money comes back and then that's roughly seven percent of what your annual contribution is. So let's see, if we go, you have presented right now, go to the first PDF.
Hey, um. Okay, let me see if I can get that to. Do this, this one might be. Now, if I may go over here to downloads folder.
Cause you had all three of them up on that PDF.
So not that one.
Actually, it would be, uh, should be number one.
Number one. Here. So the one I show is number one.
And it should, it should be, uh, it should only really have two claims on that first page.
So that is, okay, so it says, uh, loss analysis by county, division, department, and accident. It has zero ten administration, zero twenty law enforcement.
No, um, it's gonna say claims date from one, one twenty four. So maybe look at, uh, number four.
Okay.
Let's start at that end. So Rio Blanco, number four at the top, there you go. Let's see if, if your system flip, flip flop that.
So let me is that pulling up? Well, this technology is just not working for me.
You want me to resend?
Now, let me see if I can. Not opening.
Do you think this will let me, um, share my screen? Cause I could probably pull it up.
Try it.
Let's see if that works.
And let me stop sharing for a second.
Okay. Think I'm gonna request and then. Think I'm going to request, and then.
That's your range, like, no.
Let me know if y'all can see that.
Yes, we can see it.
That is awesome. We're making headway. Thank you. All right, well, commissioners, I kind of like to start these reviews of where do we sit right now? As, as of today, or as close to today as possible. So I like to kind of look at how are we doing currently this year? And we have a mid-year report out right now for Rio Blanco, and I'm, I'm happy to say you only have two claims for 400, or $4,657 right now. That being said, you can see the type of claim that we're, that we're experiencing, which is the auto-related claims, which fortunately, you only have one, or I'm sorry, two auto claims, but auto claims, they come with a, with an added enhancement, is that an auto claim can cover a multitude of insurance lines. It can not only cover the auto liability of fixing the vehicle, but also potentially property damage. If it happens to be a law enforcement vehicle, it could even bring in law enforcement liability. And then there's one of our employees in that vehicle as well, so it could hit the workers' comp side of things as well. So to put that into perspective, the double exposure of auto-related claims from the pool standpoint over the last five years has had a combined exposure of over $11 million in the last five years. And that includes, you know, about 7.9 million just on the auto side, but then an additional, I think it's like 3 million or 3.4 million of workers' comp exposure. So you can kind of see where, from a pool standpoint, this is one of our focus areas that we're really wanting to hone in on over the next 12 months in the pool to try to help bring this down, because if we bring it down for the whole pool, it brings all of our insurance costs down, it brings all of our contribution costs down, et cetera. And then also, we're not experiencing the unintended or non-insured portions of those claims as well, those indirect costs that insurance doesn't necessarily cover, like, you know, additional shifts for people to make up when an employee is hurt, that the administration time of getting vehicles repaired or replaced, et cetera. So there's a lot of indirect costs that come into that. So as we scroll down, I wanted to point out kind of where the pool is at right now, and the pool has a total of 300, or 299 claims for $2,734,074, with our average cost right now of $9,144. So that average cost is important to understand, because we can look at our five-year average and see that, okay, traditionally, it was around 7,000 was our average cost before. We're starting to see that the cost of claims are starting to go up as well. So it's important to just kind of keep that out in front and in focus. And this is the type of claims that the, the pool itself is experiencing, and you can see here how arrest-related is, is really high exposure, low, low claim count. But yet, we start looking at our frequency of claims of our vehicles, and you got vehicle strike, vehicle emergency response, vehicle.
There's uh some restrictions in there, but it's pretty vague. Uh the main restrictions are you are in order to get a rural exemption, you need to be one mile from uh any incorporated town or city. Uh you cannot have anything less than two point five acres. There's no limit to size, there's no. And currently in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four, we are sitting under fifteen rural exemptions. And um I think three cabin exemptions. Uh I didn't give you the agricultural exemption. Do you guys want that to look at?
Ag is because ag is statutory.
That's exactly correct, but you know, just for comparison. And uh what it basically boils down to is agricultural exemption. Uh the state of Colorado wants counties to recognize that agricultural exemption can be exempt of permit. And that would require um livestock, feed, poultry, and implements, and that's it. So it even, I think it even said in a description, no tool sheds, anything like that. So it's just specifically those items, livestock feed, implements, farm.
What we don't know on that is Don, the other day you had pulled up the CRS, I think it was thirty twenty-eight, two oh one or
Right.
two oh five or something to the effect.
Two oh five.
They had modified that, the CRS, so I don't, I'm not exactly sure.
They they've modified it a little bit on the uh in two, in two different ways. One is the uh it says now that the uh county uh may exempt it from the L U R, the real exemption, so we're not required to uh, we could regulate those if we wanted to, but we have the, I guess, permission of the state to exempt those, and it has to be very specific uh for the uh, you know, the egg implements, farm projects, a livestock or poultry may be exempted from the building permit process.
And they, so what are they gonna, if if that's spelled out that way, what are they gonna let us regulate?
Well, ba- basically, well, what, we're not regulate, I guess, the, yeah, so basically a pole barn that does nothing but uh houses uh uh hay, for example, would be, well, something, or an implement uh shed would be something that could be exempted, um a lambing shed could be exempted.
But we're doing that now.
Yeah, we're doing that now. I mean, I'm not, I don't think there's any request to change that.
No, correct. We're just kind of giving you a layout of difference between an agricultural exemption and a rural exemption. I guess moving on from that, you know, rural exemption really has no um limitations other than residential use, meaning living quarters. Um there's really no size restriction. Um the only limitation is the mile outside of town or town, or you know, the incorporated limits and two point five acres. Other than that, um you can uh build just about anything you want. We're, we are having some issues. It's the reason why we're here. Um of people basically abusing the exemption status, plumbing, electrical, putting partition walls in it. We all kind of know where that leads to. You know, we've thought about this long and hard, and I have long and hard, and the reality of it is I have been faced with multiple issues of coming back on where a land had been sold and an exemption status had been put into place. They built a building, and then the realtor or their realtor's attorney has contacted the building department to say, hey, has this been permitted? No, it has not. We have given the exemption, but then we find out that there's bedrooms in there, plumbing, and also hooked up to an existing septic system, which is absolutely known. So, but we have no way to navigate that, I guess, under this exemption. Let's see here. ADUs are a big thing. I mean, that's, that's a big deal in our county right now. People are wanting to put in, you know, as many ADUs as they possibly can, and this is
ADU.
Additional dwelling unit. Um, you know, with an additional dwelling unit, they follow the permitting process, it requires a limited impact. You know, obviously a building permit. In that, in this scenario, none of those occur because it's a, it's an exemption. So um the other thing we've run into, not a lot, but I can see it happening in the future, is if somebody builds a pole barn or a structure of some sort under the exemption, and they do want to turn that into an ADU, so let's say that they sell that property, and the new buyer wants to put in an ADU. It requires a huge process, so that would be reengineering of everything. That would be digging out the footers, having everything reengineered, so that cost is extremely, it's way higher than having a, you know, a set of plans, if you will. Yeah, that's, and the cabin exemption, you know, kind of falls along the same category. Uh lack of access is a big deal. ADUs again, another big deal. Uh that's a huge thing push in our county, and it gives people that opportunity to rent out you, you know, those sort of things when actually the access is not adequate. And it's not even, I believe that I was showing Leaf earlier, in that cabin exemption, I think you guys have it. It does state that they're, they're exempt from um a driveway access permit. So um I know multiple cabins that are in the area I could actually, in the middle of the summer, had to put my truck in the front and drive to do that location.
So essentially the standards, the access standards, meaning on an access road into a rural exempt cabin, they don't have to put, you know, the twenty-foot wide such-and-such gravel on it. That's really, that's what that means.
Yeah.
So uh it's not necessarily that they get exempt from the road and bridge public roadway access permit. They still have to go through.
Because they don't have to do the code, A S P R or you know, that's emergencies ever since have to go there.
That's correct. And in a nutshell, the building exemptions are simply a variance from the existing building codes. Um and if we go down the path, this is my opinion, of course, uh if we go down the path of allowing variances for everything, then the question then becomes why, why you even have the rule? Uh if you're going to variance, you know, setbacks constantly, then perhaps we should look at our setback rule as an example.
Acres, acreage falls in the same thing with cabin exemptions, thirty-five acres. Multiple times, that's been variance to five acres on one, seven or eleven acres on another.
I'm sorry, I'm not. I, if somebody wants to build a cabin up there and they don't want a thirty-foot road in there and it's so far in there, if they want to accept that liability and and their house burns down or whatever, I'm okay with that. That's their deal. I I don't think that the county needs to be poking their nose into every little thing out there. I mean, that's their property. They can do what they want to with it, in my opinion.
I think that's a fair statement, Doug, and I think it's one that needs to be addressed. You are absolutely correct. It's not our business to get into everybody else's business. We have a set of rules and regulations that we ask them to follow. What I, and I'm gonna lean a little bit on legal on this, but my opinion is we should not have a, we should not have a method to excuse their bad their behavior. If they want to forego the rules and regulations, we can't control that upfront. But we shouldn't allow them and bring ourselves into liability by offering them a means with which to exempt rules. Um and I, I know that that's very poorly stated.
Yeah, let's maybe say it a different way. That a lot of people are using the exemption to get their foot in the door, and then they're modifying it to a point that
to a point that are we on the cabin or are we on the?
Well, both.
Because there's, there's, there's rules in order to, to do that. And so they'll build the pole barn and then they want to put a condominium unit or, or not condominium, but a loft, the livable loft on top that's not that they would normally have to go back and get a permit. And then the problem is that when they do want to sell it and the realtor says, hey, this is required to be permitted, and it's not, then what do we have to do to get it fixed? Well, basically, you've got to go back and demonstrate that the, the uh code uh that we're required to follow has been used on the, the things that we wouldn't require them to be on. And it's just a matter that if, you know, whether or not they, they want to take the risk of later on it becoming a mess, that's their liability. In fact, we, we had a situation where we just basically said, you know, kind of do it on your own.
So is it that, is the issue that we give them the exemption is basically giving them the license to do more than if we said, no, if you want to build a cabin and have it permitted, the code, then they do a regular building permit. If they choose to go out in their fifty acres and do whatever they want to do with it, we're just not giving them this exemption to say it's okay. They're still able to do that. They can still.
Yeah, my question, my question to legal is if, if, so when these cabin exemptions, let's say cabin exemptions. When, when they come in and they give us a rudimentary, when they give me a rudimentary drawing, which is what we're asking for, and they, they say, this is what we're planning on building. And I say, well, that's not really to code, and they're like, I want the exemption, right? Okay, so we have now witnessed the drawing that they're actually going to build. My question to legal is, let's say that thing falls down, and I looked at it and, and I, you know, there's nothing that I can really do but give them that cabin exemption. Is that better for us as a county to have that exemption? Or would it be better if they were just to go out and build it on their own and that falls over?
Yeah, I think it'd be better if they just build it on their.
That's what, right.
And they have to come, if they come to you and they give you something and it's not to code and you're telling them not to go, then, you know, of course, if, if you don't have any choice, then uh, well, you're protected.
So I didn't say you're protected, so yeah, there's really no liability. That what, what you're, what you're um what you're saying is, is if you, if they go out there and just decide to build it on their own, you have legal ramifications to get, get to, to, to take care of that because they built an illegal structure.
If I know that.
Yeah, well, you're, if you don't know about it, then this is null and void, the whole discussion.
Well, until they go to sell it and sell the property and then so, yeah, initially it's null and void because out of sight, out of mind, nobody knows. But, you know, you inherit a piece of property and then you're like, oh, I want to sell it and then.
And if you look at the owner's agreement, A, and then number seven, it actually has an agreement there on what is to be done with this cabin front page. This would be the cabin exemption.
Okay.
Do I have that?
Yeah, let's stay on the cabin exemption because I think they're separate. I think they're two different situations and we're getting them mixed.
They are, they are. Yeah, they are different.
So how many cabin exemptions have we had in the last two years?
Three.
Three?
So cabin exemptions are definitely on the lower of the scale. I mean, rural exemptions is times five. We're fifteen in two years.
Yeah.
And I think we're going to get more probably before January's up, I would guess. We would probably get three or four more this year.
I think the, well, we're sticking on the, I'll, I'll get to the rural exemptions later because we're sticking on the cabin one.
Okay. So let's stay with the cap. So there's been three.
Yep, in the last year.
In the last year.
That we know about because.
Perfect, perfect. Have they gone through the process? Let's see, which one was I reading? There's no um plumbing.
They do plumbing, electrical, or septic or anything like that. I'm sure they have to go through the social process.
And, and have they done that? Have anybody, has any of those three plumbing, electrical?
That I'm aware of, that, that's, you know, when, once you, once you get that exemption, we, we don't go out there to do any inspections. We're never on the property. So really, I couldn't answer that. I don't know.
So there again.
Plumbing in or electrical, I don't, I wouldn't know that.
So they could actually run plumbing or electrical without even pulling a permit through the state?
Well, then, and illegally, yes, but the answer is yes.
I mean, if it's out of, out of sight, out of mind, I haven't gone through this. I have my, built my cabin and now I want electrical in there.
Yeah.
I think I'm half electrician. I can do it.
Which is.
Yeah, watch YouTube as I do it.
Yep. You know, it, it states it very specifically in here, right? You know, you're, you're supposed to follow the guideline. But when we're kind of, I feel like we're kind of issuing a blank check, in my opinion.
I think the real question, at least from my perspective, is what is the exemption? What is the cabin exemption? To come in and say, I want to build something early. I just need you to say, go ahead. Is that, is that what it is? I guess from a legal standpoint, from a leadership standpoint, from a building department standpoint, what is its purpose? And I've struggled with that. I'll just be dead honest. I, I don't know, to your point. Are they going to put in electric? Are they going to put in the, we don't know, we don't.
That's, that's, I guess that gets back in my mind to not our problem.
So let's not make it our problem.
Let's not make it our problem. So if, if the uh, if they're going to put uh electrical in there, the electrical inspector should know about it and it's his, his, his problem. It's not our problem. Where are, where, where I'm coming back to is if somebody wants to build a cabin, uh let's say it's even off-grid or, or whatever, if they want it on top of a hill, it's their land. Let them do it. We don't, who cares if you can't get a, a duly fire truck up to it or, or the ambulance or, or whatever. It's their land.
And if that is our stance, then the question becomes, why even have an exemption permit?
Because if they don't have one, then it's against the law to build it.
Well, that's kind of what I wanted to ask, Don. So since we have adopted a building code.
Right.
Is that the reason for the exemption, meaning we are giving them an exemption to our code? If not, then they would be breaking our law or rule.
Right. It'd be like the same thing as if they build a purely residential uh facility, you know, the, the house, you know, out in the incorporated part of the county. Um this allows them to build it if it falls under these requirements um without having to go through the formality of a building uh uh request, permit, code, et cetera. But if they build, if they build a residential home and they do what they're supposed to do, then they come in and say, hey, I need to apply for a building permit, and then they send it over and then the, the, they get uh taxed on it or use tax if they don't buy locally, you know, that type of stuff. And that's kind of your trigger for that. So if they want to go out there and build a, an eight hundred less uh, uh non-residential structure cabin um out on a, on a hill, then they come in and they do this. But, you know, that there's an exemption, so you tell them, these are not going to be inspected. We require, you go to sell it, you need to inform. That's one of your disclosures. You need to make a disclosure that this is not a permitted structure.
It's, it's, you know, it's, it's really easy for us to sit here as a government and make all these rules, but I don't represent the government. I represent the people of Rio Blanco County. And I'm sticking up for them. And I think that this is personal property and it's our personal property rights, and I, and I believe that that they, to change it, I think we need to get them involved.
It's definitely a direction that the board, if they want to take that, then we can.
I think we have to figure out how to acknowledge people's rights, property owner rights, the private property owner rights, to do what they want to. I'm, I'm definitely in agreeance with that. And cover our butts on the backside. Is that?
Yeah, which is, which is, which is why we do an exemption and, and, and I don't have a problem with modifying this exemption or whatever, saying that we are going to send this exemption to the state or to the electrical inspector or the, uh depending on what we do with plumbing, to the plumbing inspector. So be aware that they're aware of this. If they don't want to put any of that stuff in there, or if they want to do their own uh electrical and have it inspected, that's completely legal. Um it's, it's, it's something that, that I don't think this government needs to be involved in. That's, that's just my personal.
For curiosity, if they say, okay, it has to be eight hundred.
The square foot or less.
Square foot or less. So I get the exemption and then I decide I'm going to go three thousand square feet. You wouldn't know that because they've got the one exemption that says state. Is that, I just wanted to kind of put my.
That's correct. I'm never there for any inspections to verify that information.
Which, which brings up a good point. Is there something that we can, do we have any way to, when we give these exemptions, you say, we are going to inspect this to make sure that you, that it is exempted?
Well, yeah, I, we could enforce. We, we have mechanisms to enforce our building code, so if somebody is doing something that we believe, we have to have problems with, of course, I mean, we give an exemption, we just can't go on there and say, okay, we think you're building.
Why, why not? Why can't we put it right on here? The last thing that says that we, this will be inspected.
Make sure it follows the rules.
Make sure that it's exempted.
Yeah, I think we could do that.
So you wouldn't be inspecting, because they're exempting themselves from building code. We have to keep that in mind.
Yeah.
Right? So we're not going, when I go out there, the blinders are a little bit going to have to be on. Where I'm not inspecting building code, I'm verifying use of. Is that correct?
Well, and the size, you know, and the size, size and the, the other meat.
So, so are you guys prepared as V O C C? When I go out there and I measure it at two thousand feet, uh then I would seek direction on the board on what, what do we do with that? Now, is that, is that?
Already built. They've got it.
It's already built. They've already got the money invested. They've done it. What if they come in and just say, I want a variance? You know, it, it, there's, I think there's a fine line there.
What do you, what do you do when somebody builds something too close to a property line or is out of compliance with the building code? You're you make them tear it down, make them fix it.
Well, but this isn't, they're not building to the code.
Well, I know, but I'm just asking.
This is, this is our rule. You know, this is a rule that we have created, the eight hundred square feet. So if, if that is the case, then I need to know how we can uphold that because it's our rule.
Right, and that's, and that's my point. It's the same enforcement that we would have if somebody wasn't in.
Or if we had a legal build. Let's say we, somebody, you found out that somebody was building a regular residential house
with a permit.
With, without a permit.
Oh, without.
Yeah, without a permit or not doing what they're supposed to do. And you saw it and you're like, what the heck? Because that structure, that structure should not be going up. And they should have permit for it. It hasn't been exempted, hasn't been anything. Then we'd, we'd do a cease and desist order, then we'd make them get the, the inspection, and then if they have to tear stuff out, we'd make them tear stuff out. We'll make them rebuild it. That's, that's the mechanism we'd work.
So, so my, I guess for discussion's sake, my question is if someone wants to build a structure and they want to follow the law, uh they come in, they get a building permit, I say it was a cabin. Who cares how big it is?
Yeah.
And I wanted to build a cabin and I wanted to get a building permit from the local building con, uh official, and I did that. Paid my fees. He came out and inspected it and off we go. That's one thing. The other side of this is somebody wants a, does not want a building permit, does not want government in their, in their backyard, and they just go out and build it. So are you saying that the exemption allows them some leeway to do that? Or what, what, what is the purpose of the exemption then? Why, why just not abolish the exemption and deal with the criminals?
Because an exemption doesn't make them a criminal. If they don't get an exemption, they're a criminal.
So we're saying, we're going to set the speed limit at fifty-five, but if we catch you going sixty-five, we'll let you go? Because you signed this and said you're going to take responsibility?
I, I think you're talking two different things, please. I think the exemption itself is that if you follow the rules, you build it with, and you're, you're still legal. The question is, is okay, where you, they go like they're going to do the exemption. And then they start putting in uh extra square feet or, or plumbing or
Right.
And, and that, that, isn't that where you're talking about on the thing?
Yeah, they go.
So, but it's, it's not a whole lot different. I mean, the way I see it is not a whole lot different in that situation than anybody else that does a legal build or, or, you know, uh doesn't get the permits that they need for remodel or whatever.
So either get a permit or not?
Yeah, either get a permit or you're legal, and if you get caught, then you're subject to ramifications is, is really what it is. Just a question of what our enforcement mechanism and whether or not we're really serious about enforcing those breaches.
And then we are out of their business until they make their business our business.
Yeah, until we find out that they're either doing it illegally or, or, yeah, if they, if now if they're building, well, if they do, you know, we're still a cabin exemption, so if they decide, okay, we want to use it for commercial purposes, we're going to do a VRVO there. And we find out that they're, that's what they're doing, then that's, that's a legal operation. And then we have to decide if we want to use our enforcement mechanisms to, we go in and say, you can't do that, right? Cease and desist letter, if they don't, cease and des, they're still, they're still doing it on the VRVO website, then come in and say, you're, you're, you're operating illegally. You need to stop it because you're not entitled to an exemption if you're operating illegally. You have to go back and get a permit and do it right.
Um Commissioners, just to let you know, I do believe we have the Ransley Library Board, and that's to do their, just a little update. I'm wondering if maybe, since this seems like it's going to be a little bit longer discussion, if we um maybe schedule it again to, to discuss and get further into, you know, maybe a little more detailed conversation, maybe do a special meeting or something if that's whatever your direction is, or if maybe we can just come back to that in a few minutes after the, right, I don't know how long their presentation will be for the Ransley Library, but I don't know that it will.
Session, whatever.
Yeah, we can come back to it.
Okay.
Good. Today or later.
It doesn't matter to me.
I, I, I would just assume do it today, to be honest with you. I scheduled the day for this, so.
Okay. Jennifer, does that work for you? Commissioner O'Hara, I'm sorry.
Hopefully it does. Um just because we're, I'm coming up on her waking up and I've got to take her to the doctors. So hopefully I'll be here.
Okay.
Good, so let's uh move out of that for a moment and we'll go to the.
It's number nine, their special meeting. So it's actually after the adjournment, we're going to just move that up.
Okay, so let's go to Ransley Library Board Update.
Come on. Okay.
It's just me today. No one else was able to make.
That's all we needed. We just need you.
So I'm the director, for those of you that don't know, Emmerick Hopkins, so. Um I didn't really go into a lot of detail because I didn't really know what you guys wanted to know about where we're at. We're kind of in survival mode. It's going to probably sound like a, a broken record. I'm sure everyone is saying that, but we have no upcoming projects, nothing. We're just trying to stay afloat. Um we received our preliminary um assessed valuation for next year and it's down. For us, the net figure is about thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollars, which is humongous to a tiny organization such as ourselves. We're going to be operating on the same amount that we were given in two thousand and six, just to kind of give you an idea how much it, much it will hold. So um you know, we're going to just dig in and do what we always do. We're not going to whine and cry about it. We just uh really have a very fiscally conservative library board, and that has been historic. Um through all the records that I can look back through, I Um, through all the records that I can look back through. I've been at the library for twenty years now. And it's been that way, and it was that way before I came. So luckily, we've got um a little bit in reserves compared to other districts, but. We, I think this whole time that we've been in this downturn, we've dipped in about twenty four hundred dollars into reserves is all. So I'm pretty proud of that. So. Um, we don't have any debt, so that's huge. That that frees you up in life personally also, as well as uh when you're running an organization. So. I feel that we do a lot with very little. Um, we do a lot of things for the kids. Um, in the town and also for all the community members as far as programming and stuff. And we have excellent, excellent. Um, involvement. So we're not planning, looking, we're just trying to hang on. Buckle up. It's it's been a rough ride and we're not alone and we get that, but um. We do just get one half of one mil every year, so that's not a lot to operate on, so.
Sorry.
So I don't know if you have any questions for me, but we don't have any big plans.
So so with your downturn in the assessed evaluation, are you going to have to cut any programs or? Anything that you're doing currently? I mean, I know obviously your your overall budget is going to have to cap it. What I'm asking is what impact will that have on the community?
Um, I just got this in the mail, so um we have a board meeting um. Next month on the tenth, and we'll have to discuss that. We have had to do things like that before. Um, we're running. On a pretty much skeleton crew as it is. I mean, I had to get someone to cover for me while I came to this meeting, so we don't have a lot of. Staff. We don't have a lot of overhead. Um, so. We'll have to look and see. We have at the beginning when. Things started to kind of down. Uh, depth going in downward direction. We already cut our hours. Um, we haven't replaced staff members as they've left. So we started early seeing these things that were coming down. So you know, you have your. Expenses that you can control and the ones that you can't. And unfortunately. The only expenses that we can control um would be our materials, which that's what we do. So you hate to cut there and our programming. So. Um, I mean, again, we have a little bit in. Um, reserves, but you don't want to start depending on that as your operating budget because that's not ever going to work. So. So we're just going to make the best of it and. Be positive and. Go forward. But luckily, we are in a pretty good position. Also, all of our grounds, our buildings, everything. Is in um good shape. We've been fortunate and received C C I T F money in the past, which we appreciate, which allowed us to do. Projects inside, projects outside. So we're actually in really good shape to. Be facing something like this. So I just got to keep. Um, a positive attitude and we'll we'll figure it out. So.
Well, and if I might, that was one of the reasons why the commissioners asked to meet with all the special district, knowing back early on that we knew this was going to be. A rough year and and we're also looking at what our revenues are coming back down from the county standpoint. And we just kind of were having those conversations with all the special districts, you know, what is your plan? And it sounds like you've got a very good one that you've already discussed this. You know, it's. You know, making sure that everyone is prepared as possible.
Yes.
For not having the money that we. Have relied on in the past. So I think that's why the commissioners wanted to start having these meetings and find out. You know, do you have funds in reserve? What are you going to do if? You know. These these funds aren't available in the future. So. Sounds like you've been very progressive already.
So you are the library, yeah?
Yes.
Library. Yeah, I I hear good things about what you're doing there.
Thank you.
Um, is it? Are you the only one or do they have other? Do you have other people on staff?
Um, I've got one other full time gal. We just recently made her full time. Um, and then I've got a couple that just kind of come in and out. A few hours a week. Uh, we've got a retired preschool teacher that does all of our children's programming. Um. And she's been an awesome volunteer for she's been there as long as I have. So, yeah, so so that's good. And then we get volunteers from the community all the time. I mean, when we do events. There's no way we could do them if we didn't. And every time I ask, people just say yes. So. You know, that's awesome. I guess the first time someone says no, I'll probably start to stomp on my foot and throw in a fit. And and my library board is always very active also. You know, that's one of the things that's enabled us to keep going during all these times. And I'm not saying this for any other reason. There's none of them here right now, but they work like. They're painting, they're up on the roof patching it when it was when it was leaking. They do yard work. I mean. We're in a very different situation from I would say most of the special districts here. You know, if. A kid throws up, I don't call maintenance and have them come clean it up. You know, I go. Clean it up, you know, if we're out of toilet paper, that's me. Payroll, that's me, you know. Um, ordering the best sellers, that's me. And you know, some people might look at that as kind of a down. You know, down in the job, uh, you know, but me, I'm just like, you just roll with it like. You don't. We don't have time to say, oh, that's not my job. You know, or pass P O's back and forth or, you know. Email and hope someone else will do it. You just have to dig in and do it. So it's, I think, a lot like running a business. You just kind of do whatever is done and you don't complain about it. So.
So do you guys have bylaws?
We do.
And uh. How much money do you have in reserves?
Um, we actually have just a little over a million right now. So that's a pretty good. Pretty good chunk, but it was you start dipping into it, that could also go very fast. So.
What's a half a mil in your valuation?
Um, we're going to be getting about a hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars is what we'll get for next year. And that's everything that's here.
You you've done a good job getting money in reserves for. For such a like that.
Yeah, and you know, it was kind of became like a norm, like we would always. Put money in reserves and then when things started to get. Tighter, I was like, oh, boy. You know, we're not going to be able to do that. And that was kind of a bummer. Um, but then it became a challenge like, okay, well, so we can't put. Any in there, but I'm going to try like heck not to take any out either. So um, but at the same time, it's not like. People come in and notice a difference. And that's kind of. What I pride myself on is I I don't think the general public is aware. That we're struggling. Um, and so and we don't want them to be aware, you know, I don't want to go around town boo hoo and. Everybody because everybody's got their own situation. Uh, but I do have to bite my lip in certain meetings when I hear others doing that because I'm like. Yeah, try this.
How long have you been doing this?
About twenty years.
Twenty years.
So, yeah.
Um. Do you guys uh use S D A or any? Like that?
Um, we don't at this point. Yeah, we we've never used them before. Yeah.
Well, you're doing pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, I don't have any questions.
No, I have any.
Jennifer?
So I am going to to. Um, Emmeret's horn because she won't. I can say that. Amarette does an amazing job at the library. I know because I spend a lot of time at the library. Going and reading her paper and. Um, just spending time there. Amarette does so much more than she's telling you. Um, she wears multiple hats. I know she kind of mentioned that, but it's it's beyond just. Uh, payroll and um and anything else and everything else that you can think of because she doesn't have the staff. That um she probably could or would need. Um, she's had volunteers in the past from the school that have come in and helped her, which I think has made it. More feasible for her. The other thing Amarette does is she uses her own money. I can't tell you how many times I've watched her pull out her own credit card. To put towards the library. And um I know this because my son actually. Does some of the yard work and I know Amarette pays for that out of her own pocket. So. Um. I just want to say, Amarette, you do an amazing job and I know that the community really appreciates it. And I know that you. Try to stay involved as much as possible with your limited staff and be in a community meeting. So. I just want to say thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Yeah, welcome.
I appreciate it.
Now get back to work. Yeah, I know, right?
We just did finish up story time right before I came, so I'm sure there's still treasures. That are hiding in weird places. So, yeah. It's just like here, don't worry. Next thing I'll do. Sorry, yeah. No, you're okay. I just. Before, when I had been to meetings, they were always upstairs. And so I saw you and I was like, no, and it said. Upstairs, the sign. So I was like, okay, well, then I'm like, there's nobody up there. So I was texting Jennifer, uh, but I was trying to tell you, is this the commissioner's meeting? So sorry. I probably didn't pronounce it very good.
But do we? Do we want to go back to the exemption stuff, or do we want to finish everything else and then do that at the end?
That's what I would think might be the most the best use of time.
Good. Okay, so let's go down to. H. Discussion on the direction of emergency management position. So that's you, Vicki Horn.
Uh, it's both Eddie and I. Uh, so Eddie and I talked and we kind of thought of a different. A possible solution rather than trying to post out for a um part time emergency manager or even a full time emergency manager. And so Eddie, I'll just kind of let you take it from there.
Uh, yeah, so I did some digging into the state statute for emergency management. And there's not really any kind of requirement of how you guys choose to run that department. Um, whether that be a contracted position, part time, full time. Uh, there was there wasn't any limitation. It just required that you guys have that department and it be operational to the specific standards that the states lined up. Um, so I did, I reached out to our Division of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to see if there was any other counties in the state of Colorado that may contract out. Um, the departments themselves rather than just the work of. Plan updates. And there was two counties in the state that do it. It's Phillips County in Washington County. Um. Phillips County has roughly forty five hundred people, like four thousand four hundred forty something. Um, and Washington County has about four thousand people in it. I reached out to both of those emergency managers to kind of figure out what their contracts look like and how how that operates within the county. Um. To see what kind of cost savings or if it was if it costed more to have a contracted emergency manager. And I heard back from Washington County's. Emergency manager. And so it's actually kind of funny that these two counties. One of them's contracted with benefits and one of them's contracted without. So it's actually going to be two good perspectives of what these contracts look like. Um, but so far I've only heard back from Washington County's emergency manager. And so we have a rough idea. And what we'd be looking at budgeting.
And I also asked Ty to to check into that, being a former emergency manager also. And I think, you know, I don't know if you were able to, you were traveling and.
Bobby's still on. I can't remember who our new field manager is or.
Well. But as it stands up today. Um, we currently don't have one.
Oh.
But it was Kaylee Ham.
Kaylee, I can never remember now. But okay, so I did reach out to Bobby. She's on an incident. Um. More specifically, just to to figure that out. Are there any other counties doing this? What does it look like? Um, and how does the E M P G grant play into? A contractor versus a full time employee, if at all? Um, but. We're as soon as she's off. Whatever incident she's dealing with, then. Um, she thought she should be out earlier this week, so hopefully. Later this week, we can have a a phone call and hash some of that out and. And see.
To me, and I guess what I'm asking for is some direction to go. We can include emergency management in the budget as it currently stands um as a halftime and go through that in the budget process. And then if we can find out if this contract. You know, could be a cheaper option for us or a better solution. Then. As we get down further into the budget, we could switch to saying, okay, well, we've decided we want to try and go contract with that. Um. Just kind of getting some direction from you all, if that's even. Uh, a direction you would consider going is for like a contract.
So how does Washington and Phillips? Do their contracts, do you know? As far as like. The tent or coming to or responding to an emergency, is that contractor responsible for? That or is their contract specifically for? Making sure the county's in compliance with all their their plans and updates? So I know with Washington County, it was the compliance portion um. As well as the the response.
That's on the ground.
Yeah.
I would feel like we would need a contract, some type of contract that said, you know. Most normally it's going to roll by making sure we're compliant with all our plans and our. Things that we've got to turn into the state, but then when there's an incident, we want somebody. In person. But does that person have to necessarily live within Rio Blanco County? Or it could it be someone that would maybe travel or that could? You know. You know, be there when we need them.
Um. Yeah, well. There there are uh situations where. If you're going to work with that, it the uh. They it would be good to have relationships with the people you're working. Hmm. Agree with that. That part of it is. Would be nice. Um, so but we really don't know who's out there or how far away they are or what's going on unless we explore that. And so I guess. I would be all right with continuing with the budget and doing an R F P with the. Job description, get a job description figured out, and then we can decide whether we want to do that.
Yep. We we were just looking to be able to exercise all of our options for this upcoming of you.
Do you know, just. A question I had, do you know the the uh. Budgets that Phillips and Washington have? Are they? Operable or are they half?
Uh. Um, I I did get the contract for Washington County. Um. They did inform me that the numbers have increased. Uh, from that contract. But there there were their numbers on.
I'm 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 asking about the whole the county total county budget. I know that there are four thousand people, but is their budget? Half of what our budget is.
Oh, the county that I would have to.
Yeah.
All that information.
And we'll also look at the real estate because I mean, we have significant. Acreage in Rio Blanco compared to some other counties, so we'd have to compare.
Washington's pretty big, but it doesn't have a lot of forest. It's pretty plains.
And not that that makes any difference, but I just feel like more data that we have the more.
And I know that Phillips County's land mass is only like six hundred and twenty three square miles or something like. Uh, pretty small. Yeah.
Well, if you're okay with us proceeding that way um for your budget, when I do, when we get to emergency management, we'll. Keep it the same as what it was for twenty twenty. Uh, fours budget. But then have that caveat in there that if we can get in our P out and start to find out some. You know, situation that may end up dropping out of the budget, but then that those ones would be used. To fund that. Is it that contract?
Jennifer, do you have any? Comments?
No, I would just um. Can you send that contract out um for us to read, Eddie? Please.
Yes. Yep, I'll get it, everybody.
They're looking at something intense.
Yeah, they didn't spell. They didn't spell. What the contract is for.
Well, this is not just a general budget.
Oh.
On the thing, it's not line item, it's just kind of an overall budget is.
Okay.
Okay. That's it on that one.
Thank you, Eddie.
Yep, thank you guys. So they're quite a bit smaller budget than we have.
Yeah.
They're closer to. What I'm used to working with.
Um, so we are going on to line item I.
Mister Chairman, I move to approve uh the Public Health Contract twenty twenty five. Zero one four one amendment number one.
A second.
Okay, what's uh?
That is a contract that you had approved earlier in the year and they just, I believe, increased the dollar amount that they're going to give us.
On top of it, I think.
Um, and I can put that up here in just a second.
I wonder if they know.
Or is the value you pull it?
The original contract. The amendment didn't show any money, extra money. So it's a thirty nine thousand cotton drift. I'm trying to. The original contract with amendment didn't show any money, extra money. So it's a thirty-nine thousand cotton drift. I'm trying to. Oh, it's good, it's continuing through the fiscal year to twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, is what it is.
So continue the contract.
Yeah, the contract, yeah.
That's a day purpose. Change the state network and update the additional and federal provisions for the following reason, to update the contract documents for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. Um. That contract max on it's been replaced.
Let's hope it's just to update the federal department. So the contract must have left something out or had something different.
And the goal is to ensure state of Colorado has the ability to effectively prepare for monitor, detect, diagnose, investigate, and nimbly respond to all types of conditions, events, and disasters that impact public health.
And as I said, the, the original grant, the federal provisions have been funded with award of federal funds and there's a potential conflict between the federal provisions, special provisions, and then the detachment. So this was to clean it up.
So it's not more money?
Not more money, just, just.
Zero dollars. Okay.
I don't want to prove it. They say give us more money.
We'll probably lose the thirty-nine thousand.
Oh.
Okay. Jennifer? Do you have any comments?
I don't have anything.
Okay. So. All right.
Um, wait a minute. Gates.
Hi.
Overton.
Thanks.
Oh, hey. Hi.
Okay, let's move on to Jay.
Chairman, I move to approve the change order for the twenty twenty-four Dust Control Project due to clerical error in the C dot and county split of funds. The total project is still within the twenty twenty-four budgeted amount for the project.
A second.
Okay, Brian.
And I think uh what happened there was when Gwen wrote the original um documents, she had duplicated the split off between what the county would pay and what the state paid back from C dot. But then that was also taken off at a bottom part of the contract. So when you add that duplication, the contract actually came in exactly where it should been, which is still under the amount of what was allocated for the project. So again, it was just a clerical error and um.
It looks like this one, will it be increased by thirty-one thousand?
The contract has to go up by thirty-one thousand because the eighty-twenty split was off by thirty-one.
Well, it was off by that, so.
Right. So because that thirty-one thousand was what Gwen had duplicated.
She put it in her spreadsheet twice and she shouldn't, she shouldn't have done that.
Yeah, just an oversight and uh and Tina was, went back through the spreadsheet, her and and Scott and made sure of all the factors. But again, the whole total project still is less than what was originally allocated for it. So we're still in good shape. There were no overruns or anything like that. It could have been prevented.
Okay, you have any questions, Jennifer?
I don't.
Okay. Um, would you please call the room?
Gates.
All right.
Overton.
All right.
Oh, hey. Hi.
Okay, so let's move on to line item K.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the renewal of a liquor license for Elk Creek Ranch Restaurant LLC.
A second.
Okay. I think this is just a regular.
It is just a renewal of their existing license. They have to do that annually.
Okay. Good. So would you please call the room?
Gates.
Hi.
Overton.
Hey.
Oh, hey. Hi.
Okay, motion passed. So there's no resolutions, there are no public hearings. Other business is county administrator update.
And I will be brief commissioners. I did get that sent to you on Sunday, I believe. Um. For my part, I first, I guess I should ask if you have any questions about my report. Um, the big thing is, of course, uh budget. We uh Doug sat through a full day of budget media, full two days, actually, uh budget meetings. We were able to get through um county administration, which is all of Eric's department and all of Public Works. Um, with some caveats or some things we're still trying to research and come back to. Um, the budget scrubs for the next round, we have Jennifer and Dawn scheduled uh with their departments.
September five.
September fifth, which is a Thursday, to go through uh uh county services and county administration, including DHS, White River Roundup, Veterans, Public Health, uh HR, Coroner, and the attorney. Um, not the compensation for his attorney contract, but as of the attorney's budget within Rio Blanco County. So, and that is, yeah, so a different part to that. And budget and finance. And so that will probably take a full day. I'm hoping we can get all those done in one day. Um, I think we can if we keep it on track. Uh, it's been very helpful to do this. So I think it's running well. And then Ty, I'll get with you to see if we can schedule those next group um and hopefully get those on just one specific day. Uh, we did have two uh resignations right now that I want to recognize. Corey Silva, um excellent employee, has decided to go back to Grand Junction um where he's home, where his family is. He's going to be sorely missed, and it will be a challenge finding someone that can meet that um, the current things that he did. Um, his salary was dramatically increased, his responsibilities are dramatic, dramatically decreased, and he has lots of options for growth at his new company. And I yeah, I, we're going to miss him terribly. Um, I wish we could keep him and and then that's on, you know, he just, he needs to do what he needs to do. So he was pretty firm on that. Um, also Colleen, of course, has resigned as the finance director that was effective earlier. We have Lisa Heeman uh come in and kind of support the finance department in the interim. And Colleen will be missed also. So two challenges. Um, at this point, that's probably all I'm going to address on that. Um, you know, my thing. Is there any questions? Um, I do have an air there fair, the wrap-up for the county. Uh, that information where we, the county says what the commissioners want to do as far as the fair. Um, how do things work? How do things not work? Um, that's not the fair board. The fair board is having their own meetings, both Meeker and Rangeley. Um, but this is more for an update for the commissioners. Um, that's scheduled for September seventeenth, not the twenty-seventh. And Chrissy, is that, what time is that on? Oh, that's at ten. I messed that all up, twenty-seventh and one. So it's seventeenth at ten. Ian Rangeley.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And Chrissy.
I did, I did have a question on a skating rink.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Do you want to tell everybody a little bit about that and then I'll ask my question?
Sure. Uh, that will be, the skating rink will be the, basically the uh uplift Amer- uh uplift Meekers uh skating rink. It is not an ice skating rink. It is a uh, kind of like a Plexiglas. I don't know how to explain that. It is a, they're, they have one very similar to this, I think, in Loveland. And it is a removable. You put it down, you pick it up, and you can take it and store it. Uh, so they could bring it out in the middle of summer if they so wanted to do that. The county's responsibility on that is that they will just be able to use the basketball court um or the pickleball court, however you look at that. They'll schedule that for events through the normal way they would schedule using the pavilion. Um, we will not store it. Uh, they may need to plug in to use like ancillary lights if they want to string lights or something like that.
So my question, so is this on county that they're going to be putting it on county property or no?
Yes, it will be on the county's property where the basketball court is.
So then I guess a question that I had, and it's all around when we had the I don't know what it was inflatable jumping things for kids. Um, do, is that the same kind of liability or is that something different? Would that put liability on us like we were talking about with the inflatable playgrounds, whatever you want.
From my research that I've seen, skating rinks do not have that high of a liability. It's no date, no different than basketball courts or anything like that. The inflatables have a much higher risk because of the, the control of how many kids are in the unit. And when they're jumping and you've got this uh what do you say, like a manufactured elevation bounce, things like that. So the inflatables are have a whole different risk rating um than ice skating rinks or basketball courts or things like that. This is basically stationary. If you get on and you skate, you skate. Um, it would be, I don't know, I can, the only exemptions would be uh the ones that we found that were specifically excluded on like the insurance comp uh contracts I've seen are bounce houses, mechanical trains, uh tractors, things like that, that children would get on and get crushed under fallout, bumper cars, uh things like that. But so far, no, the insurance fell right within the same as having a basketball court or anything else.
Yeah, and that was one of the problems with the bouncy house was that we asked them to look for insurance on it because we knew it was higher risk. And every insurance policy they found excluded it. So they couldn't even get insurance for it.
Thank you. Welcome.
Who is uplift Meeker?
It is a division of the Chamber of Commerce, Meeker Chamber of Commerce. And they were going after a grant. I don't know if they're able to secure it or not, but it would be a grant for that purpose.
Does uh Chamber of Commerce have liability insurance?
I would assume so, but I don't know.
And they ask if they want to put it on. You probably want an agreement with them, which who provides them to.
And I don't know if Eric is not here, how they do the rest of their events.
Wouldn't that be covered in the check-in process when they go through the, the reserve, the pavilion?
I would think so. I don't know what they currently put out.
Depending on what we want to do with them.
Yeah, and I'm not saying that we do that. I'm just asking a question.
Yeah, if, if we uh, you know, if they want to have like regular, you know, yeah, uh, uh, deals, they could contract with the county in order to do that. Or if they want to just like, okay, we have a special event, we want to put it up, and they would do the same thing as other special events do.
Yeah, we, and.
That would be my thought. Yeah.
When we uh do the special events, like they do the pavilion and do the music and stuff like that, uh, what, what do they call that?
Event.
Well, that's, that's it.
Yeah, that's it.
Yeah.
Um, do they have to prove insurance?
I don't know. I don't refer that. We'd have to defer that to you.
When they go through the permitting or authorization process and why wouldn't we would ask for that?
I wouldn't think it would be any different.
Yeah, I think it'd be the same, yeah.
My research was just on whether policies are different. And we, actually, I looked at that if, if the county were to put in an ice skating rink, like a removable ice skating rink in that, that was county-owned. And there were no other provisions other than basketball courts or anything else.
Yeah. Is this so ice cake then or?
I don't know. Yeah, you use ice cakes.
Oh, regular ice cake.
Regular ice cakes. Yep. And you know, there's a lot of provisions about, you know, we would not plow that, we would not do any of that thing. And it really isn't made to go under snow. It didn't look like it was more. We're going to have an event, so they would scrape it all off. They, it's got forms. It won't be puncturing into the grassy area, so we don't have to worry about that. It's on top of the court. And.
Can you play pickleball on skates?
Maybe.
Well, I don't know. That might be a new sport there. Yeah, because skating pickleball, so I probably abstain from it because that's a good way to get hurt.
So again, all, you know, there really is just a, um, you know, allowing them to use the basketball.
Yeah.
Uh, ADA compliance, one thing I'm, I'm asking departments uh that if they want to have a more robust website, they need to build that into their budget. We don't have the staff to be adding things, doing research, trying to make documents ADA accessible for them. If they have something that's critical and they want it on their website, uh, we've got some resources now with converged accessibility that we can hook them up with, and then they can pay, okay, it'll be three thousand dollars if you want this on your website. Well, they can take that out of their budget. They can provide for that in their budget to buy those particular things. So far, nobody's wanted to go up in their budget and decrease something else to pay for ADA. Um, we are still going to have to continue to whittle down the website. Um. We've got a plan to try and make things correct. One of the things that's key is that we're not adding anything more to the website that's not ADA accessible. So that means that we're not putting something new out there that could possibly get us in trouble. We're following basically the statute now from just September, uh July first through July twenty twenty-five, as long as we don't add something new that's not compliant. We shouldn't, we don't open ourselves to liability.
We're continuing to try to improve our ADA compliance overall on the website and not trying to take steps backwards. What we're trying to do, yeah.
Uh, was that mice? Uh, I talked with um Kurtis Russ, and he said the population is dropping exponentially. Um, he felt like probably there would be like one more bait, which is still within our contract agreement. And they would be under a manageable basically, then the property owners could take that and manage the mice from there. And we did let the property owners know that this was a one-time thing. If this explodes again, they now have the resource to contact him themselves and manage that between the property owners. Uh, fleet policy update, uh we're talking about that fleet policy, which kind of goes hand in hand with whether we're looking at doing the enterprise. How many vehicles do we have? How many are we going to replace at a certain time? So that's, we're still working on that. Next B O C C meeting is scheduled for September tenth. And just continuing to have our meetings.
Good. Okay, any questions?
Hi.
Nope.
Jennifer? Okay, let's move on to uh commissioner updates.
So I attended the regular Northwest CDC board meeting. And then I went to Iowa to take my son to college.
Big step in your life.
Yeah.
Okay, um, I attended a AGNC Economic Development uh meeting in Rifle. And just a quick comment, the, one of the, the odd things that I heard down there in that economic thing was the amount of retirement income that comes into Rio Blanco County. Of all of the wages in Rio Blanco County, retirement wages are almost half. That's hard to believe. We, apparently we, people like to retire here. Um, then I went to a, a meeting with uh Bead and the broadband stuff that Eric had the, the regional, regional eleven was in Meeker and we went to that and learned quite a bit about that. The broadband, and I think it helped Eric out with his uh Bead grant that he's doing. And I spent a couple of days in uh Roden Bridge Budget, County Administer Operations Budget. Went to CCI Western District Meeting in Meeker that we hosted for the Western District. Got a lot of compliments about our facility and the way that Chrissy handled that. So I want to say thank you. And it, it was, it was a good, uh, good meeting. And it's good to have other commissioners come here and see what we're doing and, and get compliments.
They had a really big turnout.
Yeah. It was, we had them from all over. It was a good, good meeting. And, and got a lot out of it. I did, I think that. Um, then yesterday I went on a, on a tour. Started at uh Caris. Um, because I'm doing the uh produced water consortium seat for the, for the government, I wanted to see how they handle their produced water. And uh, so I got to go on a tour of how they handle their produced water. And we started on Pants Creek and ended up in Parachute. They've got a, a really robust uh Infrastructure in place that they've been doing for years and years. That uh, they're are reusing over ninety percent of the water. And a lot of that's got to do with uh, their voluntary uh. Getting it set up and and uh, the geology in this formation that varies a lot from the D J formation. Around Denver and I I I learned a lot. It was a good, a good uh, or. Um, that's all I had. Jennifer, you? Are you ready?
Yes. Um, so I attended the A G N C Economic Summit as well. Um, I also went to a Hickpuff Meeting in Grand Junction. Um, about Behavioral Health Administration, they're starting a new program um. Across the state, um, so just went and learned about that um, and how they're gonna implement that program. Um, also was able to do a wild horse comment. On, there's a wild horse task force that was put together by the state and Kelly, I don't remember the bill that that. Created that, but they're wanting to look at sanctuaries for the wild horses and and the. State paying for that. Um, and so one of my comments was asking. Why or how would we be using taxpayer dollars um, to create a sanctuary when we need to get our um, A M Ls down? Um, and then I attended the Rangeli Community Meeting. I did have to do that via Zoom because I am in Texas taking care of. Of my grandbaby. Um, also attended the C C I Tax and Finance. Um, meeting, Steering Committee, um, taking a vote on that. Um, one of the things legislation is doing. And or Governor Polis is wanting to do with this tax and finance is um. They will take the initiatives fifty and one oh eight off the books, off the ballots. If um, if this uh, deal goes through. Um, so we'll, we'll have to see there in special session right now. Um, also attended a training Steering Committee meeting for child welfare. Attended a Club Twenty meeting and then I also was able to attend the C C I Western District. Um, meeting via Zoom and um, same as Doug, I was getting lots of texts and compliments um. About how it was handled and um, as well as how beautiful Meker is and that they really enjoyed being there. So that's the end of my updates.
Okay. So I want to take a five-minute break before we go on this next deal, okay?
Good.
You want me to?
Yeah, yeah, just wanted to mute that fine. Perfect. May I get it?
You gotta warm your feet.
I guess so.
Okay.
See Jen's back.
Jennifer.
I think she left totally.
You know? She did.
I think she had to.
She had the doctors.
Okay.
We want to finish with?
Yeah.
Us?
Yeah.
I'm on, I'm on down.
I'm on back.
So. I guess we could keep going on the cabin exemption, but I would rather move to the rural exemption. We'll keep, we'll, we'll. I think that's for discussion or for you guys to really think about as far as cabin exemption. But, you know. There is only three in the last couple of years, so it is not being used as much. One of the reasons why is because they require like thirty-five acres and. I mean, there's a lot of acreage, but there's not a lot of people who own thirty-five acres. Uh, and if they are, and if they do, they're typically building homes in the little cabin. So that's, that's been my experience. But I would like to move on to rural exemptions if with your guidance permission.
Or yours?
So rural exemptions. I think at the end of the day, uh, may not be a problem today. Uh, but I guarantee you that they will be tomorrow. And, you know, we are getting many, many. Exemptions and we're far more ways than building permits, honestly. Um, you know, like I said, we're fifteen now. Um, and these are not uh, these are not small. I I think it used to be. I think that's what it was set up for. I think it was originally set up for a slight, you know, a little garage or a pole building or something of that nature, but. Nowadays, people are just doing huge structures. Um, that uh, that they're getting exempt and we really have nothing in place to vet those exemptions, you know? Somebody comes in for an exemption, then if they, they qualify as far as the one mile out, two point five acres. And they can get it.
So what is like, just a question, sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, we live now, our property falls on. The edge of the city, but we used to be camp, we're we're still county, but before we were a mile out, now they moved. Town limits out.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, how does that work? Is that an exemption?
Not if you're within, within a mile and a half.
If you're in one mile from the.
But now we're on the edge.
Yeah, if you did it before, then it'd be grandfathered then, but if you're wanting to do it now, you can't.
Well, is that what you're asking?
Too late, just kidding, just curious.
Yeah. Um, I don't know where that came from either, by the way. I I don't know what the reasoning was for a mile out. I'm sure there's a.
I think they're considering a rural.
Trying to keep them rural.
Oh, is that the definition of rural?
Not necessarily. They came up with when they did the.
Sure. So yeah, that's kind of, I mean, really, you you've heard our, our. Problems with it, you know, the. Uh, the ADUs are a big thing. And and again, I, I have a lot of sympathy for this, you know, I mean, people cannot afford. Uh, you know, homes anymore and I I get it. But, you know, are we, are we, are we helping that problem by, you know? I I I've experienced it firsthand with the building department where somebody builds a pro, builds a a pole barn under an exemption status. And they're like, well, their their idea was we're never gonna move. We love this place. And then all of a sudden, a year and a half later. They're moving, they're selling, and I get a phone call from the realtor, get a phone call from the attorney. And I have to go out and inspect because, you know, there's some questionable activity. That was being done at the county level, right? Now, if it was at the state level, maybe I'd say handle, handle it with the state. But there was a boiler put in, there were plumbing put in, and they were also shouldn't exist except. That being said, and I know that this is on the other side of the fence, so please understand that I'm aware of that. I'm just telling you guys the scenario. Um, the seller then, um, you know, they had the intentions of buying this property to has have it as a uh. As a hunting camp where people could stay there and live there during the hunting season. And um, yeah, they ended up not being able to do that because it was under an exemption. So then they had to ask the question of what have we got to do to make this right? Well, they have to go through reengineering, the whole entire thing, and then getting a building permit for it. And then really tearing out their plumbing. Putting in a brand new septic system. It was just very problematic.
How many times has this happened?
Then I'm aware of once.
And when this happened. They. Seller took a pretty good hit.
Correct.
So they. This this really is is beyond, I I think you're trying to take. The blame for something that's not the county. We did what we were supposed.
Well, again, I, and I'm just, I'm just giving you a piece of information. I'm really not taking the blame at all on.
I, I I I don't want to get rid of, I don't mind if you, or or I would be agreeable to. Uh, modifying them, the exemption. So that uh, we don't, I don't, I guess I wouldn't be opposed to some square footage even or or somehow we. Uh. Let them know that there's no plumbing and no electrical unless you. Work that out with other people. I I just, I'm I'm the same way with this as I am the other. I I. If somebody wants to build a, a barn out there, you put their uh, old barn to put their. R V or their uh, tractor or or whatever and I think that's.
So I have a question. So out of the fifteen rural exemptions, how many of those permits were pulled by the actual homeowner? And how many were pulled by a contractor?
Mostly contract.
Okay, so I think that's where our problem is, is I know one instance for sure that the owner was. He gotten, he, there was a bigger issue created with another entity. And he had no clue. He thought everything was kosher and going through the right permitting process. He wasn't trying to hide anything and then the contractor utilized this to get around. Inspection piece of it and then it was the homeowner that. Paid the ramifications for it.
So you've been, you're saying that the the contractor misled the homeowner?
Correct, and I think that that's happened numerous times. So I think if we do keep this. I think it has to be the physical landowner that comes in, acknowledges it. They're the only ones that can pull that permit.
Is a homeowner.
Yeah.
The landowner.
The landowner, yeah, because that would, they're signing off. Understanding everything and the the liability of, okay, if I ever want to sell this and it's not inspected, that's on me. Um, if something were to happen like the instance I just referred to. That's, that's on them.
Yeah, I have heard that from. A couple of different scenarios where I thought that this was legit.
Mm-hmm.
And it and it and it is to until, until it's not, right?
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. And it's hard to find that line.
Yeah.
In there, but I think the quick and easy in my little pea brain to fix this is for the landowner. To come in and they're the only ones that can pull either one of these. So they fully understand in that way, if something goes sideways.
If they're, yeah, signature online.
True. I I did have, I do have a list of, because I I anticipated this was kind of gonna be the the idea. So I do have a list for the rural exemptions. Uh, let's put some stipulations in there. One of them being no, no mechanic, no plumbing, no mechanical and no fuel supply. Number one, which would obviously fall under plumbing in very many scenarios.
Fuel supply.
L P or natural gas. A one hundred dollar processing fee, just to keep everybody in a loop here. There, we do not charge for the administration or the processing of these. And they are time, some can be very time consuming.
Yeah, obviously.
Yeah, so a hundred dollar processing fee. Uh, the other thing, the other issue is, and she's not here, but I I hope I have permission to speak on her behalf, and that is use tax. So one of the things is through the bill, building permit process, we are able to. Um, withhold a certificate of completion or or a um, certificate of occupancy. Um, and so therefore, that's what we can do in order for them to pay use tax. In this particular situation, I think that we can prepay use tax. So that's paid upfront on all exemptions. Um, a three hundred and sixty-five day, um, so you have three hundred and sixty-five days and then that exemption is void. Verification of use inspection. So it it is important on these rural exemptions that you specify the description of use, right? You know, we're going to be using it for a storage shed or a storage barn or parking my R V in there. I think um, a verification of use inspection is important. Um, and then that would then run into then at that point in time. Um, and then that would then run into then, at that point in time, when that happens, the building department will be responsible. To record that entire document. With the clerk and recorder, which. That is a requirement now, but I can tell you if you were to ask Mrs. Sean Luce, it never happens. Nobody records it. So we would record it. So if we go out there and we do the inspection. And we see that, uh, the description of use has been followed, then we record that with the clerk and report. So those are the stipulations that I would say, if we're going to keep the rural exemptions that I would like to have in place.
I'd have to. All of the stuff that you just listed off, you're gonna have to go visit it, you're gonna have to record it. I would take that one hundred up to five hundred.
Yeah, I mean.
Um, the, uh. Recording it. What, uh, what does that gain us? Does that gain us the, uh?
Public searchability.
Yeah.
The tax, or for sure gonna address the tax. I, I, I'm interested in that because. Um, I. I wonder if that isn't something that we could research and move into with more than just that, but it would be nice to get our toes in the door to.
Let's start with this.
Yeah.
See where that leads us.
Uh, one part about the recording that I think is, is critical is ten years from now, fifty years from now. Sixty years from now, having it, something recorded in the, in the clerk and recorder's file documents. Is huge when we go to find things. Um, so that part, I think is huge, but now what that looks like, I don't know.
So it protects the new buyer of the property, cause it's on record and therefore they can't come back and say, well, I didn't know this.
And new buyer, new buyer, new buyer, new buyers, those change hands through the years.
When you record it, is it a drawing that shows where stuff is located? What is a recording?
So what I would have recorded is that entire packet, so the entire exemption packet, so that would be their application. With their notarized signature. Um, the description of use is all in there as well as a site plan and their drawings. So that's, that's what we'll be recording.
So in the recording. Did those fees go up or they?
I don't do anything.
Yes, those fees will be going up. Yeah, it's like, and I think it's gonna be like. I know thirty-five dollars the first page or is that right? And then I'm not sure. Maybe forty-five.
I don't believe that an intergovernmental recording is charged. Is that correct?
Hmm.
An intergovernmental recording is not charged.
Typically, yeah, they not charge us to file the recording, but, um, so like if I were to come in with. It was something the county commissioners did.
He was gonna record it.
Yeah, I, I would record it.
But that wouldn't be the exempt. The exempt is if it's for the county purpose.
So for a private.
Yeah, if it's for a private purpose, it wouldn't be.
So that we could, how can we?
Yeah, I think it would be easy.
If you discharge him, is that part of the fee that you charge when you do?
That's why he said maybe.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so it'd just be taken out of fee. You clerked it, well, that's the perfect example is, uh, you lease a deed trust by the public trustee. For government purpose, but the, the landowner. Or the person who wants to lean to be released pays for it. When you file.
Even if it's going into the county's root documents.
It is going in the county documents files. That's what it is. It's a, it's a document. Uh, that's, that's, uh, signed by the, uh, uh, public trustee saying the lien's been paid off or their partial lien or. Full lien has been paid and that this property is now, uh, frame clear of that mortgage. So it is, it, but it's fully by the, uh, 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 public trustee after public trustee signs that. And it's still charged back to the, uh, the landlord.
I wanna say, and I, I understood Sean correctly and I could be wrong, but I think the fee is, if it's like forty-five dollars, it's a forty-five dollar flat. Doesn't matter if it's three thousand pages.
That's what I was wondering. That's what I was wondering.
I was wondering what the, because that's a substantial.
Because all of the, the loan documents for automobile stuff is, that's gonna be.
Well, but then the other part to that is though, all the real estate documents and things like that, that might be thirty pages or legal filings. Five hundred pages, the clerk and recorder only gets the one fee, I believe is what that, she said that was.
That makes her job easier for. The math and the billing, but it's, I don't think that's fair across the board for.
And it's a.
So getting back, getting back to your field, I guess, I don't have a problem with all the stuff you did. I think that probably. Myself, I think a hundred's too low. I think five hundred might be too high. I would like to have you. Research settled for that.
I'll figure out my time. For note on that, uh, I know that we often try to refer to our neighbors. None of our neighbors have. Neighbors meeting, Mampa County. Carco County, Route County. So. We're kinda cutting our own bread here, so.
Chris, Chrissy, did you have something?
Yeah, I mean, my one comment would be when you're doing the fee, you could also do plus recording fee. Be adjusted as like what the state changes it to be. So that in ten years from now, you're not having to change and increase the fee. It just automatically goes up if the state increases the recording fee.
I'm trying to adjust those annual when we do our. But that's a figure.
I'm trying to think of how. Cause that, that document is being recorded much later on, right? It could be a year from. Into, in order for us to get that. Might be a challenge. But, I mean, in reality. We're talking about a recording fee. At, the bigger picture is. The, the exemption. From our building codes. So do we need to look at our building codes? I mean, that. That's really the question in my mind. Maybe I'm missing it. Maybe I need, uh. I just need to ask that question of you, of our leaders, what? Why would we have an exemption? From a code that we put in place? What? What, what is the purpose of that? I'm, I'm trying to pick it up.
We didn't put it into place. The state of Colorado put it into place. We have that building, we, we agreed to use their building code. Is that right?
No, 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 we, we adopted our own code. Real Blanco County chose to adopt their own code. That's why we're on the code. It's not stating that, matter of fact, there's a lot of counties out there who don't have a building code at all.
How long has this been in place?
The building code in general or the exemptions?
The exemptions.
Twenty nineteen. This was one of the ones that, um. It was drafted, there was, uh. Jeff Coomer had protested it. It wasn't adopted appropriately. We had to go back and re-adopt that. Uh, so it was Jeff, Bye and Gary.
I'm, I'm a little confused about building code. Building code is by the state.
No, no plumbing code is by the state. Building code right now is every.
What is the building code we're using right now?
We're using the two, the thousand and six, uh, IBC code.
And who set that?
The.
International Building Code.
Well, that, that was the one that was adopted. We adopted it.
It's not our code. We are just. Enforcing that code. We're choosing to go, I think what you're trying to play is we're choosing to go off of. Those six.
Yeah, the, 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 back when they adopted it, it was probably one of the newer codes at the time, I suspect. A lot of the entities went with that because it was a standardized code.
Yeah.
That was, you know, pretty easy to, to do, kinda like the, the model traffic code, a lot of entities adopt.
Right, and that's what I'm trying to, to say is that's not something that we sat down and. Right, and it's the guideline, so we are making an exception to that guideline. Or that process. It isn't like we are. Like you're saying that we're, uh, disrupting the whole.
No, no, I'm asking, uh, because we can, we can, right, Don, we can go in and modify the code.
The building code?
Yeah.
We, we can, that, that has consequences if we, if we're to do that, because once we do it, then we have to adopt the new energy codes. We make any changes to our code at all.
We believe we gotta go that route. But, but I mean, can, cannot, I think the county commissioners of any, or, uh, county. Have the ability to go in and modify the code.
You can amend or.
Oh, yeah, they don't, well.
The, the, the. So right now, we have to adopt. Uh, if we were to change it, we, the energy code that's associated with that would have to be adopted. But we do have the ability to adopt any code that we wanna adopt. I don't think, and we make modifications too.
I, I'm just one, I, I'm.
What would you change in the, in the code to make this happen?
I think you could say, you know, anything under, that's non-residential. May or may not need full inspection, only a, a, what do we call it? A use verification. If it's, but I mean.
I, I think that's opening it up way too wide. This is a lot more defined.
This is the fun. Okay, yeah, I, I personally think if, if we put these stipulations in that we just talked about. And the fee, you know? Uh, it's, it's gonna change the quantity of exemption.
And that's, that's okay.
Yeah, well, I think that's the whole purpose in the stipulation.
That's correct.
So just so if I am understanding it right and trying to understand why we might have done that. So if I wanna build something. And I wanna live. I know that I have to get a permit and you are going to inspect.
Correct.
If I have something outside of town, I don't plan to live in it, I sign off. On your old form that says I'm gonna do it under these restrictions or within these guidelines. And I, I'm saying that I, that's what I'm gonna do.
Take full responsibility.
Yeah, so. And it makes sense to me that that just clarifies, no, you're not gonna have to come inspected, with the exception of the final one that we're just talking about.
Yep.
But. And then if and whenever they get to sell it, the situation you get into. It's, it's. Buyer, I mean, I'd like that you're recording it, the buyer knows darn good and well. And the, the seller, I mean, as they do this, they're signing their life away that that's what they're doing. If they do something different. They gotta come back and they gotta fix it, or they decrease the value of their property. They may not decrease the value of their property, but think about how much more it would be worth if they had done it.
Correctly the first time.
Kind of thing. Yeah, let's let them take their responsibility.
And for the recording?
What you're talking about.
You know, I signed off that this is what.
Oh, I see. So you're saying minus the verification inspection?
No, I think you're okay to go inspect it.
Okay.
No, I do think that that, just so that they know that you are going to do that.
Yeah.
You're, you're just gonna go. Yeah, you don't wanna go in there and start nitpicking stuff that's.
Oh, yeah, you're there for one reason only.
Yeah, and, and there's nothing that says that they gotta go this route. If they wanna go through the regular building permit route. Everything else, if they say, no, I'm, I don't want that to be a problem in five years, I might need to sell it.
Was on your list, did you add ties thing?
I did, yes, the landowner, I'd say, actually, I think that's.
In fact, we've talked about that before too.
Ron said it's thirteen dollars for the first page and five dollars for each addition.
Yeah, and the modification will be forty flat, for the, for the document.
They are gonna do that.
Well, that's what they, they signed the bills to do that.
Well, that's, that, I mean, that helps clarify it for us, I mean, because we get asked that.
Yeah.
You know. Well, why, yeah, obviously we do. So we wanna be able to answer. Or send them to big.
Thanks for that. Um, I do like the, the part about. Kind of a little bit of change in topic, but going back. So plumbing permits. I like the idea of somehow making that available that if we're gonna do an exemption, but. Doesn't necessarily, that doesn't exempt them from electrical or plumbing.
Well, now we're talking about a rural exemption. You cannot have plumbing. So you can't even get up there and pour.
It looks like a shit.
It is, yeah, you're, you're using this as a storage or a garage or whatever. Now, electrical's different. I, I think that they should be allowed to have electrical. Uh, but, um, as far as plumbing, I think no, because here's, here's the reality of. What we're seeing a lot of on these rural exemptions are, we're going to put in some stubbed plumbing for future use. Okay, well. What does that mean? So do you have plans for a new septic? Oh, no. Well, then you're gonna run into your old septic, so that then just creates a huge issue there. Um, so I think no plumbing, and no water, no plumbing.
Yeah.
And that keeps it very basic. So the purpose that we are serving with this. Is simply to allow people. An alternative to a full-blown building permit.
And, and, um. Out of the fifteen. How many are contractors and how many are built them themselves? Just curious.
Great question. I could get you that information, but I would say. More than. Ten out of fifteen are contract.
And with these new regulations, do you think that will change?
Um. Yes, I do.
I think it will help educate the property owner as to what they're really getting into.
Yeah, you know, that's a great point because I, I just did two permits. And the contractor had pulled the old dibs. And they're the applicant, right? So I send everything to the applicant. I try to never deal with anybody other than the applicant. And, uh, I really don't know if any of that information gets passed on to the owner or not. I have no idea. And so you, you just. So. So, yeah, we can, um, should we require that on all building permits?
I don't think all building permits because the coded ones, the ones that follow. The code and do everything that they're going to do, they're done, alright. The, the problem with these is they could have a substantial impact on the property owner. And, and, and they need, and, and this way they're saying, I understand that, but I still wanna go this route. Versus if, if I hire a contractor to build me a, 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 a house where everything's going to go through the. Building department and get, be up to code and be properly inspected. And I, I should get a house that, that meets those standards versus, oh, I've got a. Of, of building that doesn't meet these standards that I think do. And then I go to sell it and find out that where I want to put in a.
Sure.
And I, I think when you talk to the landowner, I bet you, or the property owner, I'll bet you that, uh. If there's not a contractor in the middle of it, that you'll get a lot of change.
Yeah, I agree. Well, I would never do it personally, I mean, just because of the, the issues with it and the potential. That you would could have sold on later and also with something temporary, very basic.
Or if it's truly an egg, you know, a barn.
I can think of.
Yeah, for that kind of stuff, I mean, for the purpose of, for the egg exemption, I would, I'd use that exemption if I just wanted some.
Should call it, I understand?
Yeah, it's, it's usually works, yeah.
But, well, and a lot of times these contractors, they're, you know, I actually have a contractor right now. We can't find. Yeah, they're not even here. They're in Florida or Texas or wherever. And so, and they were the applicant, unfortunately. So. Yeah, I think that's a great point. Okay. Well, that's great. So how do these changes get administered? So we need to do that by, is that a, we have to go in front of them then?
Well, yeah, I think I would draft it up and. Um, we'll need to see if there's, I, I don't think from what we're talking that we probably need to change our. Our ordinances or resolutions for that. I think that would just be the, uh. Way to get there.
The application would be.
The application would be such in that it would be, cause I think the VOCC can make those. Uh, appropriate, uh, uh, executive orders on how to get where you need to go.
Adding a couple more checkboxes.
Yeah, exactly. And I, and I wanna look at them first to decide that, because if it's, it was within the resolution itself that we have to change it, then we'll have to. Go through that process.
Jennifer, you have anything? For us?
I don't. Thank you.
Have you seen a big influx down here at this end of the county? Uh, with people requesting that from your, through you or asking you about exemptions?
No, I had, I don't know. The only time I ever hear about is when you guys bring it to us.
Well, we're sorry.
No, you're fine.
Okay, so that's rural exemption checked off, cabins exemption checked off. Now the next one is the plumbing. Uh, Real Blanco County in January, uh, twenty twenty-four. Before you go there, we're gonna keep cabins. So we're gonna have two separate exemptions or should we just do one now? Why, why would we have two? Well, believe it or not, I believe that, uh, uh, at one point in time, cabin exemption was under the rural exemption. Right, but.
Well, yeah, I think we.
Keep two?
Well, if, if we wanna, if we wanna modify it in some manner, we're gonna have. Well, if, if we want to, if we want to modify it in some manner, we're going to have to modify it and incorporate it in or do something.
So we can make an attempt to add those or combine those two and make one.
I don't see why we can't, yeah. We just need to make sure that they're consistent when they do what the board wants them to do.
With that thought, so what you're saying, leave is the cavity exemption would fall into the same stipulations as the rule?
That's what I was saying, and be careful, they, they may not fit. You might think about that and try and. Make it another checklist, but be careful that they, you don't.
Yeah, that is a good point. You can cross that line.
You can have a checklist for that one too, that's appropriate to that one.
Yeah.
I could ask, so a cabin could not have plumbing, electricity or.
Cur- currently, it, currently it can. Or currently.
I, I don't.
That's where.
Want to take that away from a cabin, because it does have to be on thirty papers, right?
Yes.
But that's, yeah, that's the thing. Is that, is that, I'm asking, is that the difference?
One's residential and one's not.
Yeah, there you go. Yep. Okay, enough, we'll keep two. Uh, plumbing. As of January, uh, twenty twenty four, Real Blanco County took over plumbing from the state of Colorado. I've given it, uh, eight months and, um. I would like it to go back to the state of Colorado. So, wouldn't even say I'd like to go back to the state of Colorado. I am advising the board for to go back to the state of Colorado. Um, is come to my attention just over, you know, just through educating myself in this process. This is not your grandmother's plumbing, right? This isn't, uh, the way that it used to be. Plumbing is very technical. It's very difficult. Um, it is very time consuming. Um, for me, not only just permitting and it's more educating myself to try and get to the standards that. The inspectors are, and I'm not there, uh, after eight months' time. And I don't see myself getting there. Not with my job, with what I'm trying to keep up with on a day-to-day. To go to classes, to, I, I don't, like I told you guys before, um. I, I don't care if you're certified or not, doesn't make you qualified. And I could probably pass a test, but that does not make me qualified, and I'm telling the board right now, I'm not qualified to be a plumbing inspector. Um, and I've seen that time and time again. Um, so I am advising the board that we, that we go to a state plumbing.
Isn't it eventually headed that way anyway?
You know.
If I remember, I.
Yeah, I mean. In two thousand, and so where, where this gets confused by a lot of municipalities, counties and contractors is this. We used to be able to do our own plumbing years and years and years, right? We did it. And a lot of times, all that consisted of was you had a plumber come in and you went in, you tested, you looked at the dangers, they held pressure, right? That's what, that's what it was. In two thousand, and we can have our own plumbing code, right? And we adopted, I believe, the international plumbing.
I think we had the two thousand and six of that as well.
Yep, so you had a book that you could go off of and it was, everything was fine and great and damn. In two thousand and eighteen, that all changed. Two thousand and eighteen, the stand, the state made it statute that all counties have to abide by the. State code. So, you know, one of the questions we have is, at, at the billing department is. Why are we as a local municipality, local county, why are we upholding the state statute? We don't do it with electric, electrical. You know, we, we have them uphold their own state law, their state inspection. I say, uh, let them do it, in my opinion. So. It's, uh, it's something that I'm really advising, advising the board on. I get it, we just did this eight months ago and prior to that, we switched it. A year and a half prior to that. I understand it. I know what it looks like. But I believe that it's a, of the Real Blanco County's best interest to move in that direction.
Administrator, what do you think?
I support him on that. Um. I guess here's the thing on financial impacts to the county, um, and looking at it from a budget standpoint. One of the things we talked about is, um, you know, how do we keep public works lean and mean and fighting machine? They're spending a lot of time on something they don't have the expertise in, um, that would negate them necessarily. I don't know at this point, uh, needing, uh, an initial admin assistant. I don't know, you know, where we're at on that. We'll have to kind of flush that out. Um, I feel like we're kind of fighting against, um. Fighting against two different options of public opinion. Uh, the contractors would love for us to continue doing plumbing. Because I think they're going to hope that they can get things through faster. Um, however, it. In all indications, the state may end up taking that over anyways in a short period of time. So, I mean, we know that if we, and that's one of the questions I have for Don, and we've looked at this before. Did us taking back plumbing require us now to adopt the energy codes? And if that's the case. Then that's one consideration. If not.
Well, and the, uh, there's an argument that because of the, the state requires us to use this, the. Each standard, uh, plumbing code that the state, what is it, twenty eighteen?
Twenty twenty one.
It's twenty twenty one.
Yeah, every two years, they, every, every three years.
They, they bump it up. So, so they, they do. We have, as part of our. Um, building, uh, uh, co-process, we have the two thousand and six IBC, is that?
IRC.
IRC, uh, a plumbing code. There, there, they made the argument, and I have, don't know if they've done any, uh, how far they got with it, that if we. Were doing plumbing ourselves, then we had to use or adopt the current state plumbing code. Um, in lieu of the one that we have, we allowed the state to do it, then the state just used the, the plumbing code that they have. It wouldn't be a change in our, uh, building.
That's what I, that's what I was going to ask. If, if we do it, we can do the two thousand and six, but the state doesn't, they're doing it by their.
No, we have to do it by the new code ourselves, uh, within the county if we're doing it. That, that's one of the things about it, is no matter if, if Matt or with, uh, what's Lucas, what's, uh, was.
Lucas Newman.
Lucas Newman do it, they have to use the same code and it's the new.
Well, just a minute ago, he said we, the county adopted the two thousand.
Then the state made a statute that all counties had to adopt the newest code.
Right, the newest code is the, the state code. So, the, 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 so the county no longer can do it. In fact, the, 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 the law, the twenty eighteen. Law that required the adoption of a uniform state code for plumbing. Uh, uh, not only required the counties to use that, or anybody that inspects plumbing within the state, whether it's county, city or whatever. Has to, uh, uh, inspect to that new code. But if they don't, and the state plumbing board gets wind of it, they can send their own inspectors down. And if they find out that we're not adopting to code, they can take over our plumbing inspection and charge us for it. Right now, if we use the state, there's a, there's a, we don't have to pay anything, but the landowner, I think it's like twelve bucks for. If I, if I, uh, need a, an inspector.
Extremely cheap.
Yeah, it's extremely cheap for, for the thing. So it's a fairly inexpensive process. Lucas Newman comes out, does it, he may not do it as fast as, as Matt can, but I, from what I understand, he's pretty quick on most things. Um, he'd come in, he was inspected, uh, charged the twelve dollars if I put in a new hot water heater, for example. I'm expected to, for the, the twelve dollars and, and he may have to come back for reinspection, which, what cost does that, if you recall?
I don't know what.
I, I think, yeah, I think they get one time where it's not charged and then they charge again if you don't have a fit. So, so the, the, the liability the county takes on that, because if we're not doing it the way we're supposed to be doing it, then. And we give up our control plus we pay for the privilege of giving up our control.
And what do you currently charge for a plumbing inspection?
It's basically same, the same configuration that we charge for a building inspection. So we're, we're in that same E-schedule, if you will.
Well, nothing.
So.
Because you're, you're.
Yeah, so basically for, uh, a home, you know, if you're building a new home, right, that, it just, your inspections come with it. But if you, if you're doing an, an actual pulling another plumbing permit, say for a remodel or something of that nature. And the fee schedule is always the same. When that happens, you know, we're, let's just kind of give an idea of two hundred and thirty-eight dollars for. A lav and a water closet, uh, where the state may be forty-five dollars. And they're, yeah, they're extremely.
Charged on an hourly basis.
I'm, I'm not sure how their schedule is. I think.
I think it's by.
It's by the fee schedule, so it would be like that seven point five multiplier that we use. I don't charge by the hour.
When do you need an answer, Buck? Today?
Eight minutes. I, I think that this is something that, yeah, I think it needs to be consideration. Now, everything Don said is correct. But I, I want you guys to be advised by your building official more than I would. Anything that may could or will happen later on down the road with the state. We don't know what the state's going to do. That's been rumblings for a long time. I'm, I'm advising you as your building official that this is the, this is the route that I want to go. Um, I think it's important personally.
I don't like the liability.
I know, I know.
The, uh. So I'm leaning that way, but I want to talk to some people. I want to talk, that's, that's who I'm voting for, so I want to talk to some people.
Do you want to set up, uh, another public meeting, like a public work session? To get public opinion or individual, just?
Not unless I get a lot of people asking for them, but I don't.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think so either.
I just want to talk to some contractors and. And people and, and see how. See what the reaction is and see.
So I kind of want to give an example on that, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Got to be careful on who we ask what, because it's just like a building permit. If I have a con, if you, if you pull a building permit and you're the applicant through me, your responsibility is to me and mine is to you. If you have a framer in the middle that is complaining about something, that, that means nothing.
I know what you're saying.
Yeah, and, and so we got to keep in mind that. We, we're having some general contractors that are putting themselves in the middle of these permit issues.
Yeah.
That shouldn't be there.
I agree.
Between the plumber.
Yeah.
And the plumbing inspector.
I agree. And I will keep that in mind.
I appreciate you guys listening.
Sure, we appreciate the doubt you guys do. Give your count.
Well, this is entirely Matt, so thank you, Matt. No, I'm sitting here spewing stuff, but I don't know.
Well, you sounded good.
Thank you.
Just for the record, make sure you highlight that in the.
Got it.
This mean sound.
Yeah, yeah, it did.
Sounded like anybody would talk.
It looks good. I can't forget that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think that we, we got. Oh, that's right. Oh, gosh, we haven't even done executive session yet. See you tomorrow.
For you.
Like fourteen is. We got to make the motion. You ready for the motion?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to go into executive session pursuant to twenty-four dash six, dash four two four B. Uh, conferencing with Real Blanco County Attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions concerning potential. Or litigation. And you might have to second that.
I saw that.
Well, she is up here.
She's act.
Good. Um, good, so, uh.
We will.
Got to tell the role.
Hi.
Overton.
Hi.
Okay.
Hi.
Next time.
Let's drive session.